Meeting of the Mayor and Town Council of the town of Carney. Today's date is April 27, 2021. A notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Law has been complied with. That a resolution given the dates, time, and place of all meetings of the mayor and council of the town of Carney was passed on January 12, 2021. In addition to virtual meeting details have also been advertised by the town clerk and posted on the main bulletin board. A copy of the Open Public Meetings Act information has been posted and maintained on the main bulletin board of the town hall, filed with the town clerk, mailed to the local official newspapers that circulate. The town of Carney made available to any person requesting a copy of the notice and posted on the town's website, carneynj.org, thereby meeting the requirements of the statute. The clerk will now please call the row.
Council members Doyle.
Here.
McCurry.
Here.
Echol.
Here.
Cardoso.
Here.
Canapka.
Here.
De Castro.
Here.
Santana.
Here.
Pecito.
Here.
Mayor Santos.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of United States of America. To the Republic of America. One nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Conducted meeting.
Good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6, due to the state of emergency regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, the regular meeting of the mayor and council of the town of Carney scheduled for tonight, Tuesday, April 27th, is being conducted via the Zoom virtual meeting service. Town Hall and the council chamber located at 402 Carney Avenue, Carney are closed to the public for the meeting. Please be aware that video functionality will only be turned on for the mayor and council and town officials and department heads as needed. The public is able to listen to the meeting and participate during the public portion of the meeting. If you wish to participate, you will be asked at the appropriate time to raise your hand using the Zoom hand raise feature at the bottom of the screen. When you hear your name announced, you will be unmuted so you can address Mayor Santos and council. Under an ordinance to govern the conduct of meetings of the town of Carney, during the public portion, you will have the opportunity to speak for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes. When your time expires, your microphone will be muted to allow other participants the opportunity to address the mayor. Zoom chat feature will not be accepted. Only members of the public using Zoom audio will be able to participate during the public portion. If you're using the video conference option or your telephone number option, you will not be able to speak during this period. Thank you.
As we begin our caucus meeting, we will start immediately with a presentation on the municipal budget for 2021 with the CFO. We'll open it to questions from members of the council. And then if the council is ready, this budget's been reviewed, prepared by the CFO. Shway Ferosvi reviewed by the finance committee, also reviewed by me. I think we are all prepared to answer questions from the council tonight. If the budget is introduced by vote tonight, then we'll be scheduled for a public hearing for members of the public to comment as well before it can be adopted. And in terms of being on the calendar, we are, even though it's a 2021 budget, this is the usual, the normal cycle of budget introduction. In the state of New Jersey, you typically did not introduce a budget during your first quarter because you have to complete your prior year's audit. And the budget has to, the proposed budget also has to be reviewed by the state of New Jersey. So crossing all those hurdles typically gets us to around here. Some communities even go later, some counties even go later than April. So this is a good budget, a lot of work went into it. So I'm going to ask the town CFO, Shway Ferosvi, if he could provide a summary of appropriations and revenues focusing on material changes from the prior year before we shift to the municipal tax law. Mr. Ferosvi.
This budget overall is approximately 482,000 higher than last year's budget of 80 million. In terms of percentage, that represents less than 1% increase. To be exact, it's actually 0.6% increase on the overall budget of 80 million from last year. Just going through the details, I'll go with the revenue items first. Most of your local revenue items are flat compared to last year. There were some line items that had significant that were not realized to the maximum that was anticipated last year. To name a few, they were municipal court fines, parking court revenue, parking meter revenues and construction court fees. And all those are basically directly attributable to the position we were in last year with the pandemic and COVID-19. However, even with all those reductions in those line items, we were still able to realize or not take a hit in that significantly. It was close to $100,000 between those three line items that we came in under in local revenues. In other areas of revenues, we did good. We were able to control the spending that resulted in a sizable surplus at the end of the year. So this year's budget uses 5 million of that $12 million surplus in balancing the budget. As a reference, last year we used 4 million to balance the budget from the 6 million that was available at the end of last year in the previous year's budget. Municipal tax levy for 30 in a row is again being reduced by over $500,000, which is 1.28%. This reduction combined with the ratable growth of 1.15% leads to an annual decrease in municipal taxes on an average assessed house for about $84 on an annual basis. On the appropriation side, as I said, the budget is going down, is being increased by $482,000. But just the pension increase alone is close to $600,000. If you add the JIP increases, the Passaic Valley sewer increase, the library levy increase and the debt service increase, that makes up another $133,000. So overall, you already have $733,000 in appropriation increases. But because of your reduction in salaries and wages and departmental operations, your overall budget is only going up by $482,000. Another item to note is we are continuing the same conservative approach of budgeting, keeping in mind that the pandemic is still here. Reserving, reserve on collected taxes is still kept at a same level as last year, which is $5 million, which is roughly 2.5 million above what we would have done in a normal year without the pandemic. And that's what helped us in not, in making sure that at the end of the year, we didn't have any deficits. We came out ahead with a sizable surplus that we are able to use this year to balance the budget.
Okay, so let's, I just want to take a few of those items apart. Just, I think that's a good summary, Shway. I just wanted to benefit of, of those that didn't participate in all the finance committee meetings or for the benefit of the public. You pointed out that the most significant increases on the appropriation side, on the cost side, was the pension cost. This is an amount for our, for the retirement pensions of our employees. Bigger, the most of it is for police and fire current employees. So there is current contributions made by the municipality as well as made by the employee to their pension. That amount is set, the municipal contribution is set by the state annually depending on the growth in the pensions, in the state's pension fund and how they invest those monies. So this year, that's probably, I think you said that's the biggest line item increase for the budget here till last year. So we have never funded anything less than what's the state, state has required for our pension obligations. And that continues to be. The good news is that the state is increasing their contribution. They, they reduce themselves, although they keep increasing municipalities and they're catching up on their backlog. So hopefully those funds will be appropriately funded within the next few years by the state of New Jersey. The other highlight that I just want to point out, even though we just did a very large bond issue, debt servicing costs will remain essentially flat compared to year to year. Slight increase, very slight increase.
Very minimal.
Part of that is the very favorable interest rate we got because of the current market and also because of our double upgrade. By going up to A3, we're actually able to save quite a bit in interest costs in the current market. So those are, those are a couple of the cost items I want to point out. Now, on the revenue, on the revenue side, Mr. Ferosvi, I just wanted to be clear so the public understands. You talked about appropriations coming in less because of the pandemic or the severe recession we had last year caused by the shutdown of the economy. And those fees were essentially things like court fees or fewer violations, certain fees in the clerk's office. But for things like the construction office, the real estate market continued very strongly. And the tax office, tax collections percentage of the liquid payments is probably at an all time, or one of the, it's not an all time low, close to an all time low. So those are very, very good news. But I also want to make clear that this budget does not include CARES Act funding or the American Rescue Plan funding, which hasn't arrived yet, as a revenue to make up for lost taxes or to keep taxes flat or to reduce. In fact, the American Rescue Plan prohibits, federal law prohibits, receiving entities to use any of those monies to reduce taxes. Those funds were dedicated for specific costs, CARES Act, by the legislation. And they were administered through the county. And we went through many meetings on those funds and things like overtime costs in the health department or the police department or the fire department directly related to the pandemic were items, for example, or sanitizing rooms, sanitizing playgrounds, things that occurred because of the pandemic were funded through the CARES Act and will be funded through the American Rescue Plan. They're not offsets against or bonus revenues in our budget that we're using to offset costs. And, and, and just to underline that point, when Moody's issued their upgrade, they look at, they looked at the past five years of budget surpluses and noticed that, and pointed out that budget surpluses have increased, I believe they said 228% over that five year period. So this is the result of a lot of work largely through you, Shway, in your finance department over the last several years to get to where we are today, which is to have the surplus that you noted, to have the, the, the management and expenses that you noted that we were able to keep the increase in appropriations to, you know, less than a third of the current inflation rate. But the other point I want you to clarify so that, so the public will understand is the tax level. You said it's about an $80 reduction in the tax levy for the average assessed property. But I think you need to explain that's just one component of the tax bill. So while there's also the county, the school component, and how does that fit in when you look at all the components?
So based on the current information that we have available for the school, which I confirmed with the school board of education, that that is the number that they currently have on hand. And the county's estimated increase based on our historical increase, supplemented with our ratable growth and the proportion of the county increase that gets attributed to us. The annual increase or the annual total taxes for 2021 is expected to be $10,469. That is compared to last year's tax bill of $10,490. So overall, if you were to break this apart, we have a municipal portion, which we know we have a concrete number. And that decreases $84.44 on that average house. The school portion, based on the information that we have on hand, is basically an increase of $80.47. So our decrease almost wipes out the increase that's being proposed by the school. And then on the county side, based on the information available, that's a reduction of almost $17. So if you add those three numbers, the three, the two decreases and the one increase by the school, you're looking at an overall decrease of $20.90. Again, the school and county numbers would change. And the municipal levy introduced will remain at a reduction of $84.44 that I mentioned previously.
Okay, so, so, so that, so to make that, to make that clear, there will be a reduction, will be much more modest because of what we estimate will be an offsetting modest school increase. So the net effect will be a smaller reduction than, than, than the $80. And then the other, other of them I want to point out, it's key to all this. In addition to everything you've said, Shway, is the increase in ratables that the town has experienced in the last four years. Since 2016, the ratable base on an assessed valuation number has gone up by over $50 million. That's assessed valuation. Our assessment ratio, I believe, is a little bit under 30%. So multiply 50 million by 3.3 and you get to a number over 150, 165 or so million of new investment in our community in the last four years. Even after the pandemic, that's a remarkable number. In part due to our redevelopment areas, in part due to our location, and in part due to the changing economy where industrial distribution properties in South Carney are, are very attractive. So that's another, that's another very positive factor. I would say more indirectly, indirectly related to your office, but still a key factor in why we are today with this very strong budget and a stabilized tax rate. At this point, I'd open, I'd open it to members of the council who have any questions or if the finance chair wishes to add anything, or if we have any questions from council members for the CFO. He has to leave early this evening. So we want to, that's why we want to do this first and, 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 and if we're ready, have a vote on it. So any questions from the council chair, finance chair or council members?
Mayor, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Shway for the hard work and the finance committee and those council members that served with me, Susan McCurry and Albino Cardoso and yourself. And of course, Steve Wilcox. I want to thank all of them for the hard work and effort. It's not easy. And I appreciate it.
Members of the council?
I just want to add that I agree with Carol's comments. It's a great management team, along with the rest of the council too. Everybody kind of takes part in this as we manage this year to year. But I think it shows that when you do have good, consistent management, that we can face unknowns like we did last year, the pandemic coming into this year. The prior years were the recession and that we can face it and still stay strong and keep the financial outlook of the town strong. And I think that's a credit to Shway, his office, Steve Wilcox and the management team with the mayor, Carol Jean and the rest of the council. I just think it's, it just proves, and I'm glad that you mentioned, Mayor, that the American Rescue Plan does not, is not and cannot come to help to deflect any kind of go to pay for taxes or reduce a tax rate as a, as I think some people think it will. It's not meant for that and it cannot go there. So that, this is in light of the fact that the American Rescue Plan cannot do that and has not done that. So I think it's a very good, I just think it's good, it's good fiscal management. And I think this is proof of it. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Mayor, I'd like to just add something to that. And it's, it's just pretty simple and certainly to echo the voices there regarding the finance department. I mean, Shway does a wonderful job. He's consistently doing, been doing a wonderful job for a long time. I looked through this budget such as it is, not even line by line by line, but that I didn't look, but that this is just the condensed version of it. It's a tremendous amount of work and time and effort. And the reason that we have these, these good results is not a fluke or one of those years that things just worked out. It's a result of years and years of him keeping track of where that money's going and what's the best way to invest, what's the best way to borrow, what's the best way to spend the money that we have and reserve as much as we can for a rainy day. And it's a darn good thing that that was in place, not just this year, but last year and the year before. We've seen the same kind of, of consistency and, and it matters, you know? Working together, making sure that everybody has their eye on the same prize makes a big, big difference. And just really am very grateful for the dedication of those people involved, especially Shway, you and your department. And of course, the finance chair and the mayor and the, and the members of the council that are involved in that, in those, in those conversations. So we appreciate it very much.
Thank you. I, I like to corroborate everything we've said. I'd like to take Shway and Mr. Wilcox and the mayor of the financial, financial commission. And I like to to tell, you know, sometimes people forget, it's not the small decreases we have in for the last five years, but it's very important. A lot of people saying our taxes going high and high, but we, when we see, we're seeing a decrease of our taxes for the five years in a row, thanks to the Java of those people I just mentioned. So it's very important to emphasize that. Even our taxes could, could be lower, of course, but we have to cut in service. But we keeping our service and keeping our taxes affordable and even reduced. That is very important and thank you very much for your job. Thank you.
If there are no further comments, I'll ask Councilman Doyle to move a resolution on the objective 213.
Yeah, I'd like to move resolution 213. It's the introduction of the CY 2021 municipal budget.
I'll second the motion on 213. Is there additional discussion on the budget? Before we have a roll call and before we, Shway leaves, Shway, when is the hearing on the budget, when is it scheduled for?
It's the second May meeting, which I believe is May 25th.
May 25th, okay. It'll, obviously we'll advertise it and it'll be a virtual meeting since we're.
Correct.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Council members Doyle.
Yes.
McCurry.
Yes.
Echol.
Yes.
Cardoso.
Yes.
Canapka.
Yes.
De Castro.
Yes.
Santana.
Yes.
Pecito.
Yes.
Mayor Santos.
Yes. Thank you, Shway.
Mayor, before I leave, I just want to touch base on the bond sale to complete the requirement to report to the council. The written copy was distributed to the mayor and council. As we discussed at the last meeting, I think you reported on it. We did a $29,995,000 bond sale. It was sold on April 15th. We had five bids. All of them were competitive. The lowest interest, interest cost was 1.84% with a premium of $1,353,358,000. The next lowest bid was 1.8423. Those interest rates are basically, I haven't seen those interest rates in the 15 years that I've been there. And I'm sure the town probably hasn't seen it and Steve can confirm in the last two decades at least. But those are very good results. Everything worked out, the two notch upgrade helped us definitely. And that's.
Twenty, 25 or 30 year debt, Shway?
It's actually a, goes up to 39, I believe.
39 years.
Yeah, 17, 18 years.
Which is, which is incredible considering you're getting that rate for, for that far ahead.
Right.
I think that reflects the credit rating and it also reflects the current markets.
Correct. Definitely the lowest interest rate the town of Carney's gotten in all of my years here, and I'm here a little bit longer than Shway. Maybe in the history, I'm not sure of the history of the town, but you have to go past 20 years in the, in, in history to, to come even close to those rates.
I didn't know you were on, Steve, Steve Wilcox, our town auditor, thank you. There, there, it was also a very competitive bid, right? There was over, there were six financial institutions that wanted to purchase the debt. So we were able to get a very competitive rate that, that way when we, when the market is that competitive.
Hey, I mean, the, the difference between number one and number two were two one hundredths of a basis point. 1840, 1842. Incredibly close, incredibly competitive. Yeah. So again, I, if I can just put my two cents in, part of, part of what Moody's said about the town of Carney was structurally balanced budgets, no cash flow borrowing, a strong seasoned, I don't want to say old, management team consisting of an administrator who's kind of new to the, to his position as the administrator, but he lives in town.
And he's good to the position of administrator in Carney, he's not new to the position of administrator.
Correct, correct. And, and a, a seasoned mayor and governing body that have, have been around for some more than others. But again, they look at, they look at the strength of management and the continuity and consistency of management as a very, very strong credit positive. And I think those factors, the financial numbers were off the charts looking at the last five years. And I will tell you that, that, you know, over the years, people always ask the question, how much surplus should you have? How many reserve, how much should you have in reserves? And one thing the last 12 or 13, 14 months have taught us is it's never enough. And, and, and the town of Carney came through this pandemic year of 2020 with flying colors because there's been no smoke and mirrors or gimmicks with the budget. The budget's for the last five, six, seven, whatever years has been solid. And you put a plan together that has helped you grow the surplus, grow the stability. And you can't just by happen chance not raise municipal taxes for two, three, four years in a row and continue to provide all the services you've always provided and more. So, you know, this is, this didn't happen in a vacuum. The upgrade, the two-prong upgrade from Moody's didn't happen in a vacuum. This was a lot of years of doing what needed to be done to put the financial picture and position of this town to where it is today. And that's, you know, that's because of who the mayor is, that's because of who the finance committee is, that's because of who, even though I give them a hard time because, because I like to, Shway is, you know, it's, it's, it's a team effort. And this is, this is the, I guess, the fruits of your labor.
And, and, and since you started off by saying we, we're sort of the team that's been here a number of years, that I just, and we all remember it very well because we lived it. The great recession, the worst economic recession. The great recession, the worst economic recession this country has faced since the Great Depression. We were all here, same CFO, A-Monitor. Uh, I was here, most of the council was here. Um, and we had some very lean times and we made some very hard decisions. We had furloughs. We had, uh, reduce staffing, uh, we did, uh, we did some layoffs, we did some furloughs. Um, and, uh, we were not able for a period of time, uh, to fill um, uh, positions that opened up through retirement in our uniform services. Um, uh, but we had department heads, uh, who knew that we, uh, had to get through those difficult times. Uh, we had a workforce who knew, uh, we had to get through those difficult times. No one liked it. Uh, but we knew we had to get through it and, and we did. And we did. Uh, um, so having lived through those difficult times and knowing what it means to have, you know, the, the bears, the surpluses and, and going, you know, we, we don't want to compromise those services as Councilman Cardozo said, we, we want to make sure we remain a safe community. Um, we got through that difficult time. So, so now, now having done all the right things, not just this year or two years ago, but even when um, there was a, a severe economic recession. Um, I think all of that, um, is what got us to here today. We didn't borrow, we didn't borrow through twelve years ago. We didn't come up with a fiscal gimmick and pretend to lease something and raise revenue as some other, without naming some other local ones did.
He didn't sell anything to yourself.
Right, right. So, so we, we made the hard decisions. Um, and, uh, and I think today, I think, uh, you and, and, and Schweb and, um, should be very, uh, pleased with, uh, where we are as a community.
But, but again, we don't get to do our jobs the right way without the right governing body, the right management, the right direction and, and elected officials that see the vision. Right? I mean, even, even in those bad years, you never, it was never acceptable to have significant municipal tax increases. Taxes may have gone up, but they didn't go up hundreds and hundreds of dollars a year. There was always a, a way through, through, again, hard decisions, furloughs, what have you, uh, attrition and, and, and may, maybe not replacing retirements as quickly as you might have if the economics, uh, were different. But that, that's what got you, that's what, that's what got you through the pandemic. That's what got you a double upgrade with the rating agency and that is what got you three or four years, five years of not increasing taxes, but lowering taxes a bit to help the taxpayer. So again, this stuff doesn't happen, it's not magic. It's just a lot of, a lot of hard work and a lot of smart work.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Look, at this point, we're ready for a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Doyle?
Yes.
McCurry?
Yes.
Echol?
Yes.
Cardoso?
Yes.
Kanapka?
Yes.
De Castro?
Yes.
Santana?
Yes.
And Mayor Santos.
Resounding yes. Thank you.
You forget, you forgot the Councilman, uh, Pecito.
Councilman Pecito?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Schweb.
Thank you, Schweb. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks. Thank you, everybody. Good to see everybody. Uh, see you in four weeks.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Night. Enjoy your night.
We'll proceed with communications.
John Paneda, KUEZ Coordinator, requesting permission to hang a Carney Eats banner on the Carney Dog Park fence from April twenty-eight to twenty twenty-one to June twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Carney Eats is a new KUEZ event to re-energize Carney eateries who have struggled through the pandemic. This two-week event will be held from June fourth through June twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Contingent upon any executive orders in place at the time of the event.
Uh, so it, uh, this should be forwarded to Police Department, Department of Public Works and Recreation Department. Uh, if Mr. Paneda, uh, is, uh, on, I, I'm using my phone, so I can't see.
I'm here, I'm here.
John, if you can explain, I, I know we've heard of Carney UZ at that board, but if for the benefit of the public, if you could explain what the marketing campaign is and how some of the details will work.
Right. Uh, so this is basically, we're, we're trying to help the Carney eateries. Um, and this is similar to a restaurant week, uh, that you have in other communities. Uh, but we're, we're not involving just the restaurants, we're involving bakeries, uh, coffee shops, uh, and, and another, anything, anyone associated with food. And, um, and so far we're getting a pretty good response. We got close to twenty businesses, twenty eateries that already signed up for, for the program. So that's a very positive thing. And, um, and basically we're just trying to get customers to these businesses. Um, and what they'll do is they'll provide us a special for, for those two weeks. It's actually going to be two weeks and three weekends from June fourth to June twentieth. And, um, and so, so they'll provide the, a special, try to attract new customers to their, to their establishments, hopefully help them uh, deal with this COVID and, and get, gain new customers at the same time.
Well, is it going to be twenty different specials or is there going to be some uniformity? When I think of restaurant, Rick, I think of, you know, all these restaurants will be offering nineteen ninety-nine lunch. Um, in, you know, in, in Weehawken or, or Pick the Town. Um, so there's a uniformity to it. Um, is this going to be more because of the unique, all the variety we have, it's going to be, uh, not uniform?
Right. It's not, it's not going to be uniform like that because we are, you know, we're, we have bakeries, we have, uh, coffee shops, we have, uh, restaurants. Um, so, so it's going to be unique. They're going to provide their own specials. We're going to create a, a webpage with links to their, to their own websites, uh, so that we'll promote it and you can see what the specials are going to be, uh, for each individual business.
I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, those, uh, especially for those that, uh, either didn't do delivery or laid on doing delivery. This is a great way to, to re-establish and maybe even get new customers, uh, who otherwise were not familiar with the, the local eating options in town.
That's exactly our point. We, we, we're trying to get new customers to, to come to these businesses and, and take advantage of the specials. Uh, we also, we, we picked the week of, uh, of the weeks, the first couple of weeks in June because it's before school ends and people might go on vacation. So we figured there'll be more people in town and hopefully they'll, they'll, um, you know, be attracted by these specials and frequent this, uh, these eateries and, and hopefully help them out during their, this, uh, this hard time that they're going through.
It's a, I think it's a great idea. Uh, any questions from the council?
No, I, I think it's a good idea. Uh, we, we are discussing that on the UZ and I think, uh, I like to see that in our town.
You know, this, this, if this works out very well, this could be something that we can do going forward, um, you know, in a future year. So, uh, it, it, it's a good test and we'll see how, how it goes.
And if, if it works well, we could, we could do in the, in, in the spring and the autumn too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see.
Yeah, exactly.
I've got some ideas, John, like a custard cup contest for the bakery.
Wait, that sounds very selfish to you right now. It would be fun if we did, if we did a little council crawl, you know, we could go from spot to spot. That would be kind of fun to do and try a few different spots and kind of advertise it that way, just by frequenting them. I know we, we do go to these places anyway, but it'd be kind of nice to do something like that together. That'd be fun.
Yeah, be welcome.
John, I think it's a great idea. It is. I know that a lot of them are hurting and I think this is wonderful that you're picking up that banner and running with it.
Yeah. We hope it's going to work out, but, uh, considering how many, uh, businesses already signed up, I think it's already very successful.
Yeah. Good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll proceed with the next item on communications.
Very Reverend Joseph Mancini, pastor at Saint Stephen's Church, requesting permission to hold a procession on Sunday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-one, in observance of the Salmoni of Corpus Christi. The procession will begin around one PM immediately following the twelve noon mass. From the front of the Saint Stephen's Church, ending at approximately one forty-five PM, contingent upon any executive orders in place at the time of the event.
Police Department and Department of Public Works.
Aurora Albina Gorda, President of the Peruvian Civic Association of New Jersey, requesting permission to celebrate Peruvian Independence Day with civic and cultural events during the month of July. One, the Peruvian flag raising at the American Revolutionary Bicentennial Park Town Hall Park on Friday, July ninth, twenty twenty-one, from six PM to seven PM. Two, Peruvian flag raising at the Peruvian Monument located at the new Peruvian Heritage Park at the foot of Pedon Terrace on Saturday, July tenth, twenty twenty-one, from ten AM to noon. Events contingent upon any executive orders in place at the time.
Uh, those should be forwarded to the Police Department, Department of Public Works and the Recreation Department. The good news, we, we make these contingent and executive orders, but if you saw the news today, um, and yesterday, uh, outside gatherings, uh, the number is being expanded later this month, uh, which is good news. Um, and, uh, so, so hopefully, uh, the very large gatherings may not still be possible, such as Fourth of July. But so hopefully some of, uh, these intermediary gatherings, um, like our flag raisings, uh, our smaller parades, those can, those can resume. So thi- this is definitely positive that our community events are coming back to life.
Sergeant Tom Pintrella, on behalf of the Carney PBA Civic Association, requesting permission to hold a carnival at the Frank Vincent Marina from August twenty-sixth to August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, October twenty-first through October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and October twenty-eighth through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Prospects from these events will support the twenty twenty-two law enforcement torch run, which goes directly to Special Olympics, New Jersey. And again, this event contingent upon any executive orders in place at the time.
Police Department, Fire Department, Department of Public Works and the Recreation Department.
Jackie Dumphy Silvers, on behalf of the family and friends of Noreen Silvers, a lifelong Carney resident, requesting permission to place a plaque on a new bench at Manor Park to honor Noreen's legacy and her many contributions to the town and people of Carney.
Uh, DPW, DPW Recreation, uh, Recreation has already worked on a location for the bench. Uh, the bench uh, is on order through DPW. Um, and I believe, uh, Miss, uh, uh, Jackie Dumphy is working on, um, the, uh, the plaque, the contents of the plaque, which will then order. So hopefully this will be a fitting tribute for Noreen, who contributed so much to our community, uh, during, uh, her life.
Viviana Herrera, eighth grade event volunteer from Hudson Arts and Science Charter School, requesting permission to have a canning fundraiser on Saturday, May eighth and Saturday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Events contingent upon any executive orders in place at the time.
Police Department, Recreation Department, Department of Public Works.
And in licenses, you have two parking permits, one at the Mandy Lot overnight, one Mandy Lot business daytime, two garage sale, one towing for a JCO towing company, four sidewalk sale permits and ten used car lots.
Those should all be forwarded to licenses on the finance, uh, department. Uh, the CFO already reported on the bond sale, so we'll shift to the engineer. Uh, Michael, if you can provide us an update on, uh, the road repaving project. I know we've started parts of it, but I want to make sure we're, uh, on schedule on that. Um, and also, um, Gunna Oval, in addition, the gate is still not there. So I guess that was one of the supply, one of the items that were caught in the supply chain distribution bottlenecks. Um, as well as some of the other punch list items, you know, one of the comments we've been getting on social media is, is why the bathroom isn't open yet. Uh, and they're temporary, uh, bathroom, uh, facilities at the Gunna Oval. So if you can, uh, give us an update on both the road project and.
Okay, uh, the road project, as everybody's aware, uh, we finished the section of Bergen Avenue. We will be back to finish the, uh, last piece of that later on, uh, hopefully this month. In terms of the next streets to be done, um, on the road program is they're going to go from Stewart to Chestnut. They'll be doing that Wednesday and Thursday of this week, probably paving towards Thursday and Friday, milling and paving. So that'll be Stewart and Chestnut. Then they will move to Sealy. Um, and that's what I have for the next two weeks of paving and then we'll keep you posted as we continue to go on to the other, other, um, road programs. So, um, the contractor still commits to, to the middle, to the, uh, third week in May to have most of, uh, the work completed, except for, uh, a few of the settlements. Um, so that's the road program. In terms of the Gunna Oval, uh, project that Mayor, you are correct with the gate. They are meeting out there tomorrow, hopefully getting that finalized within the next several days and hopefully getting that delivered within the next, hopefully one to two weeks. Uh, in terms of the bathrooms, we are waiting for a final, we are under the same criteria as every person in town of Carney. We have to get electrical inspections, plumbing inspections and final COs of the buildings. Those are scheduled to be completed by the thirtieth, which is the end of this week. So I'm anticipating those bathrooms will be open and operational. Everything has been delivered. We are not waiting for anything else there. Part of the delays on that was the electric. We couldn't close the walls in and finish the bathrooms until we got our inspections, but I'm hopeful to have those bathrooms up and operational by, um, Monday of next week. Uh, in terms of the other punch list items there, uh, we had some issues with some of the play equipment over the weekend. Got several emails from, uh, several council people and residents. Contractor went out immediately on Sunday and tried to restore the one, uh, play structure. Uh, bolts loosened again. Uh, I think some council people, I think it might've been Rich, uh, found bolts in the field. Rich is really good at finding bolts in the middle of the fields at the Gunna Oval. All right. Contractor is coming back tomorrow, um, early morning, um, to look at that, the manufacturer, to make sure all the play equipment is secure. Um, we will go through, just so everybody knows, not only the mayor and council, but the public knows that this park will go through a break-in period. And what I mean by that is, you know, things will be, have to be adjusted, additional garbage cans will be added. Um, the facility is, is, is starting to really see some intensive use, uh, which is, is wonderful. And it's why the town of Carney spent all the money to upgrade the facility, but just keep in mind, we have a two-year period, a maintenance period on this. So to put everybody, uh, and reassure everybody, we'll continue to make sure that everything get, in this park gets done, done properly and maintained. The volleyball net was, just so everybody understands, the volleyball net was damaged. That's supposed to be repaired tomorrow as well as the tennis, tennis court. Uh, the only thing that's, we're still waiting for this, the exact schedule on is the finishing of the basketball court. As I've mentioned several times to you, um, I rejected the surfacing on the basketball court last year. We're waiting for seven-degree weather. I've, I feel that the basketball court's probably still three to four weeks away for, for final coating. It is open.
It'll be eighty-five tomorrow.
I, I know.
Only one day, Mayor.
I know. Every, every mayor and council, when I say seventy degrees, they get the one seventy-degree day and they say, okay, ready to go, let's go. Um, but yes, you're right.
Fifteen degrees over.
Right. So we have to maintain seventy degrees.
It's going to be sixty, so again.
Right. See, so, uh, we're getting very close. Um, and just to keep everybody else abreast, a couple of other things that I know several council people in different wards um, were concerned about. I'll try to hit as many of them as I can. Uh, in terms of Pedon Terrace, uh, the topsoil and seeding, we're waiting for the trees. I just notified the contractor today to start the topsoil and seeding and the restoration there, that will be done. Uh, I know those, those residents on that area has went through a lot of hardship over the last year, but that is coming. Uh, David, just confirm if you can. I think that there's a total of seventeen trees being replanted or fifteen?
Uh, eighteen trees in total that are to be replanted.
So eighteen trees. Uh, we did take a survey of, of the entire neighborhood, went door to door. Um, and that's what we've came up with and each one of those residents will get those tree replanted. Um, another, another project that I wanted to just go over, we are starting an emergency project on, on Sanford Avenue, starting tomorrow. Um, myself and the councilmen of that ward, Mr. Santana, Mr. Kanapka, went out there several times to residents just to give us synopsis of what's going on in that area. We have actually on, on Sanford Avenue, three sanitary sewers, one down the center of the street, one down each side of the street. On the eastern side, easterly side of Sanford Avenue, there's a manhole that crosses our storm sewer that goes down to the Harrison Avenue Pump Station. Uh, and the manhole has lost service there and was backed up with bottles, debris to the rim. Uh, it's been cleaned out several times now, twice on two separate occasions. Um, so what we're going in there tomorrow, um, with the contractor is, is to replace that main, that ma- that, that manhole goes under the storm sewer. There's a sag and, and fix that. That's phase one of the improvements on Sanford Avenue. I will, at your next meeting, give a long-term solution and plan on how to rectify some of the concerns in that area. That area has been, um, notorious for flooding. That area has been notorious for flooding and sewer backups for many, many years. And this, again, this is not going to solve all the backups that we have there. Unfortunately, that area gets hit when the Besake Valley Trunk Line Sewer fills and gets CSO flows into it. Our system discharges into the sanitary sewer system. And based on hydraulics, it comes out at the low-lying area, which is Sanford Avenue. We have to come up with a long-term fix on that, so these residents can be, rest assured that they won't have any backups. There is some maintenance issues there in terms of a tremendous amount of glass and bottles that were found into the sanitary sewer when we were there. But the good news is this is the first step. We are also investigating the storm sewer there. It was televised. It looks like we may have some separated joints, nothing, you know, severe, but something that we're going to have to go in and maintain. And Harrison Avenue Pump Station is, has been working well with the temporary pumps and holding the flows down in that area very well. I could actually say, I think we have more capacity there with temporary pumps than we did with the one permanent pump. So we should be going out to the DEP very shortly on that. We're just waiting for the easement from the post office. As soon as we get the final easement for the post office, we can submit those, those plans to the DEP and get that project going. Some other good news, which I think is everybody, and I'll stay in that ward. The DDH Pump Station, Duke Street Pump Station, we have a pre-construction meeting on May 3rd. Invitations went out today. At that pre-construction meeting, the anticipated start date and schedule will be disclosed at that point in time. But the good news is, is we went from an award to a pre-construction meeting, the contractor, and I anticipate that work to start in the very near future, two, three weeks, I would guess. Moving on to another topic. One other thing I just want to back up in terms of the Gunna Oval, we ordered plaques. We got a notification from the manufacturer today. We're hoping to get those plaques delivered within two weeks. We're pushing them. As soon as they come in, we will coordinate with the town, the proper ceremony to dedicate those plaques and have them installed. That's the monument wall that we've been talking about for some time that was reviewed by the Rec Commission, as well as the mayor and council. In terms of the two demolitions in the town of Carney, I know that has been concern for several residents and several council people have been calling me routinely on them. One is the Skinner Site and Besake Avenue, and the other one is on Forest. Contractor has been authorized to do the demolition of both. The water connections have been disconnected to both sites. The environmental assessment on both the buildings have been completed. On Forest Street, some of the asbestos shingling has been removed. The process that happens in a demolition, so everybody's aware of the processing. The contractor can only put a construction permit in with the town of Carney once they get letters from all utilities that all utilities have been properly disconnected. Right now, we're waiting for public service to disconnect the gas and electric to both facilities. As soon as the contractor gets those from public service, he will file a permits immediately with the town of Carney. And he has promised me he would go into immediate demolition of both sites.
Is it scheduled with public service?
Public service has been put on notice on both, yes. No, is it scheduled? I have no schedule from public service as to when they're going to do it. But they've been requested to do it.
Can we try to get a schedule from public service?
We will follow up with them, and I will call Rich Dwyer to see if he can't help, any other assistance by anybody to help us get PSCNG to disconnect would help expedite the project.
Michael, I have a good contact, I have a good contact number. I'll still share it with you.
Okay, and like I said, you know, as soon as I can get those, those utilities disconnected, the contractor has promised me he'll come in within a day or two and do the demolition.
Right, no, 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 we understand that. It's just, and usually the utility disconnects. You know, they're not overnight. They take time because they have to be scheduled. That's why I asked whether they're scheduled. So unless you have confirmation that the department has scheduled it, we don't even have an estimate at this point. So that's the first.
I will follow up with the contractor now to see if he has that. The guy, the contractor that we're using is Sky Contracting. One of the individuals that worked for him, his name's George Sosa. He was a public service employee for many, many years. So he was doing the connection, he was doing the contact with public service. I will follow up with him and see if we can't get a schedule. Simultaneously, we will also call Rich Dwyer tomorrow and see if I can't get, make sure we're on the schedule.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, I've already reached out to Rich Dwyer two weeks ago when I talked to you. So I thought he would have reached out to you before tonight.
Carol, we could tell you as a public service, you know, they were, they used to do these in about 10 to 14 days, but it's taken longer.
They were on disconnect, so they sent, they sent a field crew out, but that must be a preliminary step. So the, we need to get, you know, I don't know what backlog they have, and this is not unusual, not in any way being critical of public service. Now, is it scheduled and how do we get it scheduled?
Correct.
Okay.
The next items on the agenda are the proclamations being issued. The first is designating May as Lupus Awareness Month. The lupus awareness groups in town will be at Town Hall on May 1st, tying ribbons up and down Carney Avenue. And lupus is one of those underfunded illnesses in terms of the medical research, often goes undiagnosed. There is, while there are some treatments coming online, there is no cure for the illness, and it can be quite debilitating. It can strike very young, as well as adults. So it is something, because of the physicians, the difficulty of getting a diagnosis, it often goes undiagnosed. So the purpose of Awareness Month is for lupus is to encourage citizens to be aware of the symptoms. So that if it is symptoms, it's an autoimmune disease, so it's not a very, symptoms could vary from person to person, but there are certain targets. Your own body attacks, certain organs or your skin cells or kidneys, in some cases your lungs or even your joints. So, and I thank and encourage the local residents who every year take up the cause for lupus awareness. The next proclamation being issued is Mental Health Awareness Month. This is another illness that often goes untreated. It often could have very severe consequences, sometimes could lead to severe depression. Sometimes could lead to suicide. It's a stigmatized illness. So this encourages residents to, to seek professional help if they believe they have a friend or a family member or him or herself suffering from depression or other mental illness. We also have a local group who does also ribbons on Carney Avenue. They'll be out there May 2nd doing tying ribbons for Mental Health Awareness Month. And then the final one, and the week is next week, it's Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. May 2nd through May 8th. And the Office of Municipal Clerk, it's not a clerk, it's the Office of Municipal Clerk. It's a professionalized position in the state of New Jersey. It's a critical part of local government. They are, they have to, there is coursework or certifications that must be taken to, and there, there's a limited group of people who qualify to be registered municipal clerks in the state of New Jersey. They often are direct link between citizens and local government bodies there. They often take many of the concerns from residents. They recognize their function in terms of municipal council meetings, maintain minutes, legal notices, open public document requests, administration of local elections. There is a series of significant responsibilities that municipal clerks are responsible and entrusted with. So, and then they have continuing credits they have to obtain every year to maintain their licenses. So I want to, and we have town of Carney, we have two registered licensed municipal clerks. We have the Town Clerk Patricia Carpenter, and we have the Deputy Town Clerk Lila DeCastro. So that proclamation will also be issued. And then the final item I'd like to report. So we've crossed, we now crossed that threshold of supply exceeding the demand, not just in Carney, but in the region. There's more supply of COVID-19 vaccine than there is demand right now. Just a month ago, it was, it was still the opposite. We saw this date was coming. It's, you know, we, they were said by the end of April, and certainly it has happened. So we have a clinic tomorrow, walk-ups are taken. You don't need an appointment. It's Moderna vaccine. If you have the first dose with Carney, you will get your second dose in Carney 28 days later. Tomorrow's clinic is at the Hartong Center, which is the recreation building on Besake Avenue, near the Bell Hill Turnpike. There is parking there, limited parking there. And then Saturday, we're having another clinic at the high school, also first dose clinic. We're currently taking appointments, but we'll also take walk-ups on Saturday. So if you can go online or make a phone call tomorrow to the health department, you can make your appointment that way for Saturday or just show up. You know, it's, they're going to be there most of the day, just show up, get your vaccine. Get it not only for yourself, but get it for your community. That magical number, it fluctuates, but it's, most people think it to be around 80%. That's 80% of the community that needs to have antibodies for COVID-19, either through vaccination or through having the illness. And, and even with the illness, if you've had the illness, most physicians recommend that you also be vaccinated. So do it for your community. We need to get to that threshold. All those activities we're talking about, we're slowly opening up, we're starting to have, we're hoping to have, you know, a graduation ceremony, maybe two or three, as opposed to a drive-through ceremony that we had last year. Depending on what the number limits are, will determine how many ceremonies that school district can schedule. But all these events all depend on reaching that herd immunity number so that the illness does not spread here. And so we encourage you to get vaccinated. In a way, it's, it's, it's a relief that there's so much supply right now. But now is really, I mean, it now comes to hard part. It's getting those who are reluctant, if you, it's your right to refuse. As an American, it's your right to refuse. So we're asking, we're asking you to, if you're not sure, if you need more information on the vaccine, contact the health department. Go to the CDC website. But please do not delay it. If it's a matter of scheduling or a matter of, you know, letting, you know, those who are more vulnerable go first. That, that time is now, your time is now arrived. You can get it scheduled. Those who are most vulnerable have already been offered the vaccine. We want to get to those high vaccination rates so we can resume all those activities that our community had enjoyed in the past.
Mayor, if I might add to your report, I agree totally with what you said. In fact, I think there is no reason not to get the vaccine. You, our community is over, throughout this whole pandemic has suffered dramatically, as other communities have too. Many people of our residents have passed with COVID, have suffered through COVID, suffered the lingering effects of COVID. Nobody wants this. Nobody wants their family to go through it, their friends to go through it. Just get the vaccine and just end it now. Help us end this thing now. And that's the only way it will happen with this vaccine. Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to add that in.
I agree with you, unless you have a medical reason that your doctor says you cannot get it.
And that's not, and that's not, that's a, that's a small percentage.
Small group of people.
That's not something that the majority of people should fall on as a use. So, and I think those that have that kind of medical reason, they already know it, and they, they probably had talked to their doctor about it. But general, for the general public at large, there really is no reason not to get these vaccines. Just get them, get them for yourself, your family, and your community. It's really as simple as that.
And we're administering Moderna. And we will be administering Moderna this week. We do not yet have confirmation of Pfizer vaccine. That's important because that will allow us to vaccinate to as young as 16. Right now, we can only vaccinate as young as 18 with Moderna. So you're absolutely right, as Councilman McCurry said. Come and get your vaccine tomorrow or Saturday. Tomorrow at the Hartong Center, Saturday at the high school cafeteria. During the business portion of the meeting, I'll have the following items. 203 authorizes 118 and a half hours of overtime Department of Public Works to repair police vehicles, respond to a call from the Carney Police Department for a fallen branch, to video and clean a sanitary, clear sanitary sewer lines on Sanford Avenue and Radley Street. Mike Negli had talked a little bit about that. And let me just follow the commas here. And on William Street, the repair of potholes. The performance of maintenance on street sweepers during outside hours. Responding to alarm on a freezer at Hartong Center, that's the vaccine freezer. So as soon as there, we have to maintain daily temperature records for all our refrigerated or frozen vaccines. So whenever an alarm goes off, it has to be immediately addressed. Also overtime for sanitizing town playgrounds, we're still doing that, even though contact surface transmission is extremely low. I think most residents, certainly I do, appreciate an effort of sanitizing our play equipment on a regular basis. So we'll continue to do that. And installing hands-free towel and soap dispensers. I don't know what building they had to do that during off hours. Do you know, Steve?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'm two, I just, the last item, I thought we were hands-free on all our soap dispensers already. Was there a repair or is there a new one being installed?
There was a batch that had not been installed previously, so that was to install that, the last batch.
We're catching up on, okay. All right, the total cost is $5,821. 204 approves the annual stipend for a part-time municipal recycling coordinator. That stipend for 2021 is $5,000 under this resolution. Resolution 205. Resolution 205 condemns the violent insurrection at the United States Capitol on January 6, 2021. This resolution. I mean, we're all very familiar with the very disturbing events that occurred on January 6th, when a group of violent insurgents vandalized the United States Capitol, smashing windows, looting art, destroying property, interrupting a legal democratic governmental procedure, resulting in over 50 police officers suffering injuries. And this is really something that shocked our country because the orderly transition of the presidency has been part of our DNA as a nation since our founding, since the first orderly transition from the very first president to the second president. So this resolution condemns those acts and commits the town to uphold in democratic institutions. We, we thank. we thank the resident of the town of Carney who pointed out to us that we had not yet adopted a resolution on this. I think the resident was correct in pointing out that even though there's no doubt that we here on the Carney Town Council, myself condemn what happened. I think a, a written record of that for for the town's municipal clerks files to show that this event was recorded in our books as, as one to be condemned in our municipal books. So thank you to, to the town resident who raised that with me. Resolution two oh six accepts a grant from the hazardous discharge site remediation fund, public entity grant program to the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And this is for the Gunnel Oval. The funding of it will likely be over two years. I think Councilman Curry, you recall the first portion or Steve Marks, three hundred and fifty thousand, is that number correct? Or are they, or are we applying for the, the full allotment, hoping that we can still get it this year?
The number is in the resolution. It's about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Next item I have is resolution two oh seven authorizes an emergency contractor, Joseph M. Sensari and Negli Engineering Associates for the Sanford Avenue Sanitar Sewer Depression Emergency for total not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Michael reported on that earlier. Two oh eight authorizes an execution by the town of appeasement consent to a D E P permit for work related to the portal bridge project. This is the new northeast corridor rail bridge over the Havensack River. It touches upon some municipally owned property in the marsh. Resolution two oh nine authorizes the sale to the borough of Madison of DPW equipment no longer needed for use by the town of Carney Department of Public Works at the price of sixty thousand dollars. This, there was a process that we undertook. It took a couple of months, but I want to thank David Hayes for, for for his efforts and, and, and since arriving as DPW superintendent in addressing this item. Assessing its, 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 its use and then determining that we did not need the item because it could not be safely used on Carney streets. And then arranging through, through a price and getting competitive, a process of getting competitive price for this equipment. Resolution two ten authorizes the sale of vehicles no longer fit for public use by the Department of Public Works and whose value is less than the town's bid threshold at private sale without advertising for bids. This is a resolution to typically do as we assess inventory in various departments. We've then authorize its public auction if we no longer need the equipment. There typically is typically is depending on departmental change, needs and how they change or how our department head or sees a particular need and I wouldn't say it happens every year, but it happens not infrequently. And the items being listed below at private sale through the CFO include a Chevrolet Cavalier from the Recreation Department, a Ford Bronco from the DPW Department, a GMC pickup truck from the DPW Department, and a Chevy pickup truck, a Chevy pickup truck from the DPW Department. See, those are the house cleaning items, yes. Resolution two eleven is pursuant to town code section twenty-three dash seven approving a curb cut. This is for new construction at seven thirty-nine dash forty-one Forest Street, block one thirty-one, lot twenty-eight to accommodate the new driveway. It's all the town code requirements as reviewed by the engineer and the construction office. And then resolution two twelve is to go into closed session. And the item we'll review in closed session are legal proceedings regarding tax appeals for residential properties, tax assessor for twenty twenty-one. The filing deadline was the beginning of this month. The real estate market values have appreciated very significantly. So we'll get a report from the assessor, but I would expect that appeals will be for unusual properties and usually assessed properties or properties that have changed hands at a much higher price and they're assessed that we need to review with the tax assessor. And those are my items for the public portion.
Mayor, if I, if I could, if I could give two more quick updates before we go to the council?
Yes.
I just got an email from the contract. I have some good news. The electrical meter was removed from three sixty-nine Forest today. They'll be removing the overhead wires on three sixty-nine this week. They anticipate having public services disconnects on both facilities done hopefully by the end of the week. And those demo permits can be submitted early next week. So.
You mentioned electric. What about gas?
They said gas will be by the end of the week, their hope. P S and crew, P S E G crews will do the overhead tomorrow and they should have the gas done by the end of the week.
That's very good. So we could, please keep us updated. So hopefully if they meet that schedule, the next week demo can start.
I will. And Mayor, one other project that I know you were concerned with and several of the residents, ninety-four ninety-six Park Avenue wall. The restoration and rehab of that wall. There's a contractor meeting tomorrow. We're soliciting quotes and should have a contract ready to award for you at that, your next meeting for those repairs.
Thank you.
Mayor, yeah, I just want to tell you, on your resolution two oh six, it's three hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and three cents.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. So we're doing portions. Since we couldn't get the entire, this is for some of the reimbursement for the Gunnel Oval costs. Since that was elevated, we were able to have the cap qualify under this grant program from the state of New Jersey, but the funding of the grant program is budgeted by the state every year. So the availability of funds depends on how much is budgeted by the state and how many applications the state receives in any given year. So I believe our environmental engineer said he expected it to be funded over two years. So I think that's why the amount is somewhat less than, than, or less than, than what we had hoped. Okay.
Mayor, before we go to Mary, Mary Train, I'm sorry. I have just one question for Mr. Neglia. Resolution two oh seven for Sanford Avenue. Is that work going to begin tomorrow?
That is, that is the work that's beginning tomorrow, Councilman.
Okay, because I know there's, there may be some residents in attendance here. So I just wanted to make that clear. So if that passes tonight, which it will, resolution, the construction or the opening of the road there will begin tomorrow, correct?
Tomorrow morning it's supposed to start and I will make sure I confirm with both you and Mr. Santana in the morning that the contractor showed up.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Councilman De Castro.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening on the agenda, I have resolution two sixteen authorizing engagement of additional personnel at the Health Department for contact tracing related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Resolution two seventeen authorizing change order number four in the amount of nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents to DASL LLC for the COVID nineteen response center at the Carney Health Department. Total change order increase of nineteen point thirty-two percent. Also to report, I just want to report, we, Midland Playground, we hosted the ribbon cutting this Saturday. It's a beautiful day to see all the children in the playground playing. The family, Midland, Marine Midland family came to honor the event. Also in attendance for Councilwoman Carol Doyle, Councilman Facito, Councilman Santana, Mayor, thank you all, Councilman Cardoso, so thank you all. I want to reach out to David and Michael. Thank you for the work and, and, and efforts. David and Kevin DPW team and the KPD with the continued surveillance and security. So it was a great day in, in just in the neighborhood for the children. That's a lot of multi-dwelling families and, and it was just great to see the children playing in the area. So thank you.
And also for the family of, of Charles Walter Midland, who he showed up as well, as well as several other friends and family members. So it was a, a very nice tribute. And, and he was from the neighborhood. He lived around the block from that playground. And I saw a post earlier today someone who grew up in town who knew, there were several, he called them boys from the neighborhood who, who who made the ultimate sacrifice in World War Two, including Midland. And they all came from that neighborhood. So it's a very touching story and and Mrs. McCann, the niece, actually brought an image of, of Miss, of, of Midland who died at the age of twenty-two.
Also the Marine Corps and Russo, and Russo and his family were in attendance. So just thank you all.
And Councilman Canopka also.
Councilman Canopka and Josh. Josh found his spot in the playground and I just love watching him play there. So thank you. I think the name that they used with the Cooper's Block, that was the Cooper's Block area. And I think it was the Cooper's Block Boys, I think they called. So it's nice to hear those memories.
And it's sad to hear that there, there were enough who made the ultimate sacrifice to call them the boys who lost the World War Two. I mean, that is how devastating that war was for.
Thank you, Mayor. Also today, we had a food distribution at the Health Department. It was a last minute call through the Hudson County and, and the Health Department, Nellie Chief Miss Sandra, the Carney Fire Department all came together and, and made it happen. Three hundred and forty-three families were serviced and that was just with a few hours' notice. We did receive confirmation from the county and the allocation will be received weekly until June. That confirmation was received today. And again, Chief Miss Sandra and the Carney Fire Department, DPW and Nellie and the Health Department has been amazing in that response with the, with the notice, the availability and just getting it, the services out to the community. So the, as soon as the confirmation is received weekly, it will be posted on the town website and our social media pages. So always reach out if you have any questions or if, if you miss the posting, just give the Health Department a call. The direct line is on, on our town website. Coming up in, on Tuesday, May eleventh, also in response to the epidemic of the opioid overdose with collaboration with the Hudson Regional and the Robert Johnson, they continue to offer the free online live training prevention of the opioid overdose, saving lives. It's a live training of life-saving Narcan use and also for the first twenty-five participants, they would be shipped a Narcan supply kit. And that's scheduled on, on Tuesday, May eleventh between two PM and three thirty. You can go on our town website and the registration details are online. Life-saving blood drive, that's scheduled. The mobile unit will be coming to the Carney Public Library and that would be parked in front of the library. Thank you, Josh and Ken for coordinating that. Providing safety guidelines are being followed, so appointments are required. You could find that link to, on our website and there are still some appointments available Thursday, May twentieth between twelve thirty and seven thirty. Also to continue, just if, Stephen, if you have an update on the Health Department on the reopening, if we have a date on?
We, we don't have a date as of yet. I could report that the building received the electrical permit that was necessary. P S C and G energized the building. The furniture has, we had a very generous donation from the Freeman Building, Paul Silverman, a, a local property owner and developer from the Meadows area. He had a building, a tenant leave and left a lot of literally brand-new furniture. We were able to, I would say probably about fifty thousand dollars worth of furniture that was donated in very good condition. That was moved into all of the offices. Ken Pincus actually moved into his office today. Everything is being set up and it should be within days that the, the building is operational. The, the internet is functioning, the telephones are functioning. We just have to schedule, Dennis was there to turn on the telephones and internet for, it, it's a one-by-one function. So Dennis was there to do it for Ken Pincus today and we're going to have to move in the other staff, you know, one by one, so to give Dennis enough time to set everybody up individually.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, Mayor, thank you for your, your fight and allocation of vaccines for our community and keeping the vaccine home so close to so many. And just circling back to, to Michael, I just have a question on the Gunnel Oval. I know we were, there was an AED, AED defibrillator unit on order. Was that installed or?
Those aren't installed yet. Once I get the COs for the building, I'm thinking that we should probably, Mary Train, I was talking to Steve because Steve was following up on it last week. I think we should put it probably in two locations, one at the main building, but the, by the play structure would be one and one would be on the maintenance building on the other side and sign it. They have to be outdoor units because obviously if they're indoors and the building is locked, they'll be of no good, no use to anybody. So we will, they're not in the park as they are as of today, but we, as soon as I get the COs to the building, which I expect this Friday, then they can be ordered and mounted. And I do think you need two more than, rather than one. We could probably do one, but the site is a large site. I would suggest two.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just on another note, just take back day on unwanted and unused meds to clear out your medication cabinet. It was this past weekend. Thank you, Chief King. Thank you, Councilman Santana for, for that continued word out. And just so, you know, the, it's not just one day, it's every day of the year. The Health, the Carney Police Department has a the, the disposal mailbox container, it's safety container, it's locked. So you can just come in and dispose of any unwanted and expired medication there anytime. And that's all I have for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Cardozo.
Good evening, Mayor. I have no formal business tonight. I just like to, to wish a happy retirement to Fire Captain John McCaffrey. And I will thank him for thirty years of service to our town and our Carney Fire Department. I also like to thank the continuous, the, the Proveka Civic Association of New Jersey for the continuous distribution of the food to our needy residents. It was a very, very commanding act they're doing. And also I was, I was pleased to meet the family of Mr. Meagling and and attend the playground. And I'm very pleased to let the playground come out. Thank Mr. Neglia, that comes very nice. And also I'm very pleased with the structure of the, the play structure on the Brighton Playground. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your efforts on, on your vaccines and I wish everybody to get the vaccine so we can have the, the, our, our people getting the most of and getting all the the, 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 the security we need. And please, because that is not over, everybody should continue to use the precautions, use the masks and everything. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Santana.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I have resolution two eighteen. Resolution authorizing the execution of person-to-person transfer of plain area retail distribution license number zero nine zero seven dash forty-four dash zero four three dash zero zero four from Sputnik Inc., TA Mirasol Liquor and Deli to, to Shray Vitala LLC, TA Mirasol Liquor and Deli thirty-two dash thirty-four Davis Avenue in Carney, New Jersey. I was going to have Chief King talk about the twenty-four seven box, but Councilwoman De Castro already spoke. So thank you, Councilwoman, for mentioning that and it's important for our residents to know. So thank you, Councilwoman, for mentioning that and it's important for our residents to know that at any point 24/7, they can walk into the KPD headquarters and drop off their drugs that they have in their cabinets so that they can keep their home safe, especially if they have children at home. With that being said, I do want to mention and congratulate the first ward council members and the mayor for getting Miglin Park done. And I'm proud to say that that same day, two hours later, I stopped by with my son and he was able to play in the structure of the two to five-years-old and he was really happy about it. And I just want to thank everybody involved. Mike, thank you for choosing the structures and it was really good to use it and, you know, knowing that we have such a beautiful park, another one in our town that the kids can enjoy and the families can enjoy. With that being said, I just want to reinforce, please, everybody, just get your vaccine. It's not enough to say. We can repeat here a thousand times, but you have to think of your elders. You have to think of your community and you have to go out there and simply get your vaccine. The good overcomes the bad and the bad is very minimum. And whatever is being said on social media and online, it is, 99% of it is not true. So I just urge everybody to go out there, get your vaccines and be safe and make our community safe. And that's what I have for tonight, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Knopka.
Tonight on the agenda, I have Resolution Number 215. Resolution appointing Renee Villatoro to the part-time position of security guard for the Town of Carney Recreation Department effective April 28, 2021. By way of reporting, I also was at Miglin Park and I just want to add that it got my son Joshua's stamp of approval. He immediately went there. He played on everything that was there and it's a very nice setup. Especially, I took notice of the benches they have there and it's a shaded area. So families can go there, bring a lunch, sit there. Nice, it was in the shade the time we were there. So it was very nice design for Negli Engineering. It was very nice. David Silva was a big part of that design, I heard. So it was very nice design and beautiful park. Also, by way of reporting, I had the honor to go to the American Legion Post 99 on Thursday night. Each year, they give awards out to firemen and policemen. Last year, they couldn't have that because of the pandemic. So this past Thursday, they honored recipients for the last two years. And I just want to, I have it written down here so I can read it off, so I don't mess up the years or the names. Jonathan Dowey as Police Officer of the Year for 2019. Officer Anthony Olivera as Police Officer of Year 2020. Chief Joe Mastandria as Firefighter of the Year for 2019. James Crow as Firefighter of the Year for 2020. Also retired Fire Chief Steve Dill received the award for his 35 years of service to the town. And while we're talking about the firefighters, I just also like to thank Fire Captain John McCaffrey for his 30 years of service to the town. I wish you the best of luck in your retirement. One other thing by reporting is the Little League. May 15th is opening day, Saturday. I was just informed of this. Maybe Ralph can add to this event at the Oval, if Ralph is there. I know Tom is in the audience there. I see his name. So if he has to say something now, maybe we can bring him on. Ralph?
It's Saturday, May 15th at 12:00 PM at Gunner Oval. T-ball, minor league and little league children will be on separate fields so we can comply with the social distancing. And that's about it.
And we have a good layout there. We were there when there were tryouts. And I think the layout in the field, especially that clover, gives you enough room to hold the ceremony. And as you said, Ralph, you know, maintain distancing as needed. So and the gathering of numbers are going up in terms of how many we can field. So that's all good. So I'm happy it's scheduled and as long as the weather cooperates, it should be a good event.
Yes, we're going to have the minor league kids on one field, the T-ball kids on one field, a different field and the little league kids on a separate field. So it should be a nice night, a nice day.
A nice day. Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
You're welcome.
The last thing I have is that my doctor did clear me. I'm getting my first dose tomorrow to vaccination. So, thank you. With that said, please get vaccinated. It will help everyone. Also, support your local businesses. John Panado earlier was saying about the restaurants. We don't have to wait till that week. We can go there now. I order out a lot, you know, get it delivered to my house or pick stuff up, you know, we got to support our local businesses. And like it says, we don't have to wait till that week. We can do it every day. And that's it for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Echols.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Resolution 214, which is a resolution accepting the retirement application of Fire Captain John McCaffrey from the Carney Fire Department after 30 years of service. This is effective June 1st, 2021, and pending approval of the police and fireman's retirement system, his terminal leave pay and unused vacation total is $56,222.43. It's subject to change if additional time is taken. Captain McCaffrey, John McCaffrey is retiring from our Carney Fire Department after 30 years of dedicated service. 30 years is a lifetime. I can't imagine the stories that he has to tell, the events he's been at, the relationships he's forged, the effects he's had on his fellow workers, his staff, his crew, his colleagues. On behalf of the mayor and council, I just want to thank you for your service, your dedication, your willingness to share your time and talents in so many ways for so many years. Your experience and skillset has influenced countless new firefighters and kept your crew and the residents of Carney safe through years of leadership and dedication on this job. And I'm not sure that, I mean, I know it's a job and I know what it's like to work a job that you love. And you can always tell when someone is really dedicated to what they do. We wish you a long and happy retirement, a healthy retirement, a well-deserved retirement. And we thank you so much for your service. In addition, I just also wanted to mention, and thank you for mentioning it, Councilman, the awards ceremony that we attended the other night. It was one of those times where we, with COVID, you know, we weren't able to get together for last year's ceremony. And so when we met for this one, it was such, it was a joining of the departments. It was a joining of the recipients of these awards, but it was the first time we had really all been together in a really, really long time. And seeing the chiefs of the departments, you know, Chief Dowey retired, you know, we saw Chief King. We saw Fire Chief Dill. We saw new Chief Mastandria together in the same place at the same time. You know, really just congratulating each other, not in a boastful way, in a respectful and responsible and wonderful way. And the way that that was represented to their crews, to their people, to us, was just really done very well. I want to thank Lynn Twist for that and not just him, but of course the Legion for putting that together so that we could all be there. And then, you know, you have your Police Officer of the Year, you know, John Dowey from last year. And then, of course, this year's recipient, Officer Olivera, so humble, so well-spoken, so generous with their speech that they gave. Not talking about themselves, but talking about the camaraderie they have and the respect they have for each other and where they come from and who influenced them. And then you have Firefighter Crowe, who wouldn't have even said that what he had done. Someone else had to report his heroic act so that he was up for this award. It just speaks volumes to the dedication of our uniformed services in the Town of Carney and to their leadership. And we owe them such a debt of gratitude and we just wanted to thank you publicly for all of that once again. And with that said, I would like to also say, you know, better days are coming. We know that is true. We hope that is true, but only if we work together to make sure that we stay healthy. We need to be vaccinated. We need to wear masks. We need to stay distanced because we really want to have more of these moments where we can all get together and enjoy each other and celebrate our town. So with that said, that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Tonight, I'll be moving the consent agenda. All matters listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the mayor and council and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. I'll ask that minutes be approved pending any corrections. The regular meeting of April 13th, 2021 has been circulated. I'll have motions to suspend the reading of communication and read by title only. Resolution 194 is the Billis Resolution. Resolution 195 is a resolution authorizing the return of unused escrow deposit to the Colosseo Development Group, Inc., in the amount of $12,228.73 relative to a zoning board application number 2832 concerning 8 Bergenhoff Road, Block 252, Lot 8.01. Resolution 196 is a resolution authorizing the return of unused additional escrow deposit pursuant to Resolution 2018-523 to Colosseo Development Group, Inc., in the amount of $7,527.39 and relative to zoning board application number 2832 concerning 8 Bergenhoff Road, Block 252, Lot 8.01. Resolution 197 is a resolution authorizing the Glen Springs Holding, Inc. and its agent Woodward &amp; Curran, Inc., to encroach upon the town rideaway at 100 North Hackensack Avenue, Block 298, Lots 12, 12.01, 14, 14.01, 15, 15.02 for the installation of a groundwater monitoring wells and environmental soil borings. Resolution 198 is the resolution granting permission to J. Fletcher Kramer &amp; Son, Inc. of Hackensack, New Jersey for road opening permit at 20-24 Elizabeth Avenue, Block 110, Lot 7 in order to install a new one-inch domestic water service. Resolution 199 is the resolution granting permission to J. Fletcher Kramer &amp; Son, Inc. of Hackensack, New Jersey for emergency road opening permit at 234-238 Carney Avenue, Block 244, Lot 12 in order to repair a leaking water main. Resolution 200 is a resolution authorizing six hours of overtime to Jonathan Zuzura, Technical Assistant Land Use in the Construction Code Enforcement Office to support the regular evening meeting of the zoning board on April 6, 2021 and the regular evening meeting of the planning board on April 7, 2021 at the cost of $259.92. Resolution 201 is a resolution authorizing six hours of overtime to Dennis Kenseko, MIS technician, to provide virtual meeting support for the Recreation Commission on April 21, 2021 and the mayor and council meeting on April 27, 2021 at the cost of $419.58. By the way of reporting, I too was happy to attend the Miglin Playground opening. It's a wonderful facility and credit, of course, goes to Neglia and Mary Train and Albino. They did a wonderful job in planning that out with the neighbors and getting their input. I do have two sad messages. We lost two great veterans in the Town of Carney. One is John Schmidt. He was a member of the Marine Corps detachment from the very beginning. He lost a fight with cancer. He was a Vietnam vet. We also lost Tom Nash. Tom Nash was a Ranger, served in Vietnam. And he served on our museum committee and he also was a key member of Carney Voice. They will both be missed. Tom will be greatly missed because he was one of the hands-on, along with Bill Sweeney for Carney Voice and helping all of our veterans. So our sympathy goes out to Diane Nash and to John Schmidt's family. We're sorry to lose both of them, of course. I just want to give a shout out to Carney Municipal Alliance and Carney Coalition and the Carney Police Department for supporting National Take Back Day. It was the work of Carney Municipal Alliance to get that take-back container, old mailbox into the lobby of the police department. It only took about 20 years to get permission to have that in there. So again, I want to give a special shout out to Carney Coalition and the Carney Municipal Alliance and the police department for all their support in that. Also, on a really high note, I want to congratulate Jimmy Mullen. Jimmy Mullen, we have recognized two years ago, I think it was, at a council meeting. He just won the U.S. World Wrestling Team this past weekend in Wisconsin. He gave up competing for states in New Jersey to try out for this. And his next competition is in Budapest, Hungary and also Buenos Aires. Again, it took a lot of hard work, definitely, definitely a lot of dedication and compassion.
I thought I read today that either he made it or is trying to make the U.S. Olympic team for Tokyo.
Yeah, that's what, this is what, these are the first two parts that he had to pass to even get to compete for that. So that's why he's going to Budapest to continue this. So I just gave a big shout out. His family's a longtime Carney family and certainly doing Carney proud by accomplishing this. I don't know that it's ever been accomplished at his age in the past to win those two events at Wisconsin. I don't, I don't think that's ever been done before. So again.
We'll be rooting for him in Tokyo.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. So we have to give him a lot of support and certainly doing Carney proud. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'll have the following ordinance for introduction. Oh 17 prohibiting the operation of cannabis businesses within the Town of Carney. If you recall, after the referendum of last year, the state, which adopted, passed the legalization of recreational marijuana, the state signed into law the New Jersey Cannabis Regulating, Regulatory Year. Let me read it correctly. The New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act. This legalized basically recreational marijuana. However, towns have the right to opt out of it. This ordinance will confirm that we are following what we had previously adopted as our ordinances that we are opting out of permitting the sale or distribution of, through retail, of recreational marijuana use. It also will confirm that what is also under the laws that we will, how we had created through prior ordinances in South Carney, the area where we permit for medical marijuana dispensaries, that will confirm that that still is there and nothing interferes with that. But what's important is that whatever's on our books now is that this ordinance will specifically opt out of the state legislation. And we had a certain time period to do that, so that's why we're doing it now in order to make sure that we are part of, within that time period for that opt-out. Oh 12, on second reading, that's all we have for introduction. On the second reading, we have the bond ordinance, oh 12, providing a supplemental appropriation of $4.3 million, $4,300,000 for Duke Street, Terrace, Tappan Street and Hoyt Street Pumping Station in and by the Town of Carney in the County of Hudson, New Jersey and authorizing the issuance of $4.3 million in bonds or notes of the town to finance the cost thereof. Oh 13, which is establishing handicap parking space at 57 Forest Street. Oh 15, which is the ordinance amending Section 17.1 of the Town Code to exclude vehicles over designated gross weight.
Back from somebody. Uh, please self-mute if you're not.
Dennis, can you please mute uh Jim?
I'm sorry.
Um, uh, oh fifteen, let me, I'll read that again. Oh fifteen, amending section seven dash seventeen point one of the town code to exclude vehicles over designated gross weight on Sanford Avenue from Harrison Avenue North to its nordly dead end. Uh, the gross weight of the vehicle are vehicles over four tons. I know the se- uh, the second word had um helped and assisted in the introduction at the last meeting. Um, I don't know if you have anything more to add to what you added at the last meeting, but I know that this is on recommendation and it is definitely um uh being um promoted by the second word councilman. Uh, oh sixteen, which is an ordinance establishing the full-time position of general supervisor garage services. Um, I'll go through the salaries on this. This creates a twelve-step salary. There are two tiers. Tier one, uh, I'll call it tier A, a revised salary guide, where step one begins at fifty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and runs up to step twelve, which is eighty-one thousand one hundred forty-six dollars. Uh, uh, tier B, which is a step one, uh, forty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and runs up to step twelve, which is sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. And that's all I have on the agenda as far as, far as the ordinances are concerned. Um, just by way of reporting, um, I know with the weather getting very nice spring, summer, summer actually may come tomorrow with the way the weather looks. Uh, but our um tree program is off to a good start. I know that there are very good, uh, there is a lot of um interest in uh tree plantings throughout town by our residents and in other areas of town on our public rights of way. And I have to commend um David Hayes and and Kevin Murphy um and managing this program because through their efforts, uh, they helped beautify the town by hopefully we'll be able to plant more than a hundred trees uh throughout the town. And I also commend Carney Aces. They also have been helping to promote, pass the word on how to if you are a resident and you want to have a tree plat- on the green belt uh planted in front of your house, uh, just uh go onto the town website and there is a uh application for you uh where you have actually a choice of trees. So um and uh thank Carney Aces for help promoting that as well. Um, and that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Facito.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate our our first ward and uh Mr. Neglia and the uh the uh opening of Miglin Playground. It was quite an honor to be there and to meet uh members of the Miglin family. It was a beautiful sunny day and it was quite an experience. Um, I'd also like to uh congratulate uh Officer Jonathan Dowey, Officer Anthony Olivera, and firefighter firefighter Crowe for uh their awards that are, they received last Thursday, uh, three more heroes uh from Carney. Uh, it was quite an experience to be together again, everyone. Um, I'd like to uh congratulate uh Captain McCaffrey on his uh for his thirty years of dedicated service to our community and wish him well in his retirement. Um, also, I'd like to thank uh Mr. Catafi, uh, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Neglia for their immediate response uh to assist something down at the uh, the Gunnel Oval and um they uh solved it uh immediately. And I just want to thank them for the, the immediate response and attention they gave to it. Um, this past uh week, uh, besides the um the, the distribution of food at the uh health department, the um Food Pantry Network had serviced two hundred and seven families uh last Friday. It was the numbers down a little bit, uh, which hopefully people are getting back on their feet, back to work again. And um I want to thank those, all those volunteers, the service organizations, uh, the local businesses, large and small, and all the residents for their support uh feeding those in need during these, these troubling times. Um, and three more departments uh need to be thanked and I, and I, I need to do that now. I'd like to thank Chief King in the Carney Police Department, Chief Miss Andria in the Carney Fire Department, uh, Chief McNeil uh for the emergency services. Um, without these these chiefs and their departments, um, they assist each and every week uh at the uh distribution points of food and getting the food there. And also, not only for that, but for the assistance they give at each COVID vaccination center. All three departments are part of that and and they uh work very hard to keep everyone safe, uh, checking on everyone and keeping uh those in the uh arriving and departing safely from those sites. So thank you uh to all those three uh departments and chiefs. Uh, we really appreciate your hard work. Uh, without you, these things wouldn't get done. Uh, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. At this point of our meeting, we'll open it to the public for any member of public officials to raise a question uh with me or the council or department heads through me. Uh, please remember to limit your comments to ten minutes. Madam Clerk, are there speakers? You're muted, I think. Uh, there's three so far.
Uh, Mina Elka Dios.
Okay, I put her the ability to talk. Mika, uh, you could speak. Just unmute yourself. I, I guess that's a no.
We'll come back. Who's the next speaker?
Melanie Ryan.
Melanie. Welcome back, Melanie.
Hello, thank you. Um, I missed the last, what, since I missed the last two, do I get thirty minutes?
Doesn't work that way.
Okay, so when I was last here at, I want to say the end of eight, uh, the end of March. Um, we had been discussing the fact that bills were going out with pilot payments and it was anticipated that by the end of April, beginning of May, we would know how much we had collected in pilots and what amount would be going to the school board. And I know that Chway had to leave, so he's not here to answer us. So my question is, is it going to be available at the May, at the first meeting in May?
So we, we have to receive audit numbers because it's a look back to the prior year and it's a percentage of of gross revenues of the development for the prior year. Um, so we, so we have to wait for their audit numbers. Uh, I did not get an update uh from Mr. Ferrosby on, on that question, Melanie. So I don't know if the numbers came in or not. So I hope that he will have that update uh for us at the next council.
Okay, so therefore I can assume that since we don't have those numbers, that um increase in revenue of ten million and the decrease in cost of two million that I saw reported does not include the pilot payments?
That is for twenty twenty. So I believe the pilot payments in twenty twenty uh were included in revenues. I think they, uh, Chway's not on the line right now, so he's the one that has the detail. But I believe they came in higher than what we had budgeted for twenty twenty. I think the number was either one point one or one point two million that we actually received. I think the projections for this year are to be closer to two million for the year. But I don't know if the audit numbers have come back and whether they confirm those higher amounts.
Okay, um, as you know, I was also at Miglin and I think it was really um interesting and good that we were able to use the name monument, the plaque from the original park. Um, because people may or may not have realized that that was the, actually the first memorial plaque for service members killed in action that was ever dedicated back in nineteen forty-six in the town of Carney. Um, and in reference to the comment about the boys from the neighborhood, um, eleven of the thirteen members listed on that memorial plaque actually lived within two blocks of that playground. Um, one lived on Chestnut and one lived over on Forest by Police Headquarters, which was a police headquarters at the time. Um, also, I had a question here and where did I write it down? Oh, the Carney Eats Program, is that only available to UEZ members? Or can restaurants call the UEZ office and register for the program? Or how does a restaurant or an eatery become involved?
John, can, if you're there, can you answer that? I think I know the answer, but I'll let John uh answer that for you.
Yes, i- it's open to uh any eatery um townwide. We are reaching out individually to all the eateries uh to see if they're willing to participate. Um, like I said, we have about almost twenty eateries that are already committed to, to this uh program. And uh we hope we have a lot more, hopefully.
But they, but they're not precluded from calling your office to sign up on their own. They don't have to wait till you call them.
Exactly. They can call my office and I can get them set up.
Okay, and then oh, my last thing. When are we getting new ambulances?
Uh, we were, uh, the administrator and I were reviewing that uh last week to see if any of of the new funding, federal funding, whether it's the Merica Rescue Plan or the COVID nineteen community block development grant funding would be able to uh be allocated to a new rig, ambulance rig. Uh, the rigs are owned by the town, uh, and we provide the insurance. Even though the squad is a civilian squad that's autonomous, we also provide the building. Uh, at no cost. So to answer your question, Melanie, uh, we're still looking for, to see if one of the federal funding uh sources uh will uh will, can be used to uh purchase a new ambulance for the uh for the town of Carney.
Okay, and because the salaries of the people that work on the ambulances are funded by the billing that the ambulance does, and we don't always get money because there's a lot of people that don't have insurance for the costs of the ambulances. Are they a five oh one C three or are they a for-profit?
Um, I don't.
I'm confused because they sent out the donation letters, so I'm just wondering.
When, when they were reconstituted, uh, it went from all volunteer to civilian paid. And I want to say that's got to be at least ten years ago, probably more because my, my ears cut and merged. Uh, they were a not-for-profit at the time. Uh, I'm assuming that's still the case, but um, you know, they're autonomous, so uh, they report to a set, they don't report to us in terms of auditing or, or uh, or, or what their current status is. Uh, so I don't, I, I'm assuming they're still a not-for-profit, Melanie. And whether they could bill us for their observation time at clinics and then we seek reimbursement. I think that's something we can explore with the administrator and the squad.
Okay, so then my next question is, if they are in fact still a non-for-profit, is there a way to seek donations towards helping offset the cost of either the new ambulances or new staffing, additional staffing? I mean, they, 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 we all know they got swamped this year with the number of calls they handled that were COVID-related. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what are the funding options.
I think part of the issue right now, uh, it's not you, to the Carney Squad, um, is that it is uh, it is difficult to staff EMTs. Um, and uh salary levels are increasing for EMTs and plus they're, they're in high demand. Uh, so that is a challenge that uh we're going to have to sit down with the squad's chief, Harry McNeil, to see how that um, uh, whether that could be addressed. I mean, the, the issue came up briefly at one of our OEM meetings. Um, and uh it's something that we said we needed to review further because uh there is uh, there are staffing shortages right now uh in the Carney Squad.
Okay, but also, don't we have a, how many, I, I was always under the impression we had three or four ambulances. And then somebody told me recently that we actually only have two that are functional. Do we know how true that is?
Uh, I think that there are, I think Mr. Marks will know the details on the mechanical conditions of each of the rigs. I think there have been, uh, there's at least one that has some very serious mechanical issues. Uh, Steve, do you have the detail or do you, or, or should we have Harry at a future meeting?
Yeah, I think we should have Harry at a future meeting. There are four rigs, uh, recently, two were out of service, being serviced. And, and you're, you are correct, Mayor. There is one that's an older rig that has more fundamental problems. So they, they vary between um two to three rigs in service at any one time.
No, the rigs, but not staffed. Staff, you're, you're right. Actually, staffing the rigs, it's one to two rigs at any one time.
Correct.
For staffing. Now, for available rigs, you could have a backup or someone, some, uh, one may be maintenance, so you bring in the other or but uh, but uh I think for staffing purposes, uh, uh, they don't hit three. And I think they're having a hard time hitting two.
Okay. I just think that we need to do something about that. It's, you know.
And, and, and we will review it. We did discuss it at, as I said, at one of the OEM meetings and, and just
I know, I know our firemen.
Well, I did, I know you know, Melanie, but for the benefit of the public, there is mutual aid uh with surrounding, with the uh surrounding communities. Uh, there is the uh Carney Fire Department. They're all trained EMTs. And uh, and the Carney Squad is basic BLS. Uh, it's not advanced life services. It's basic life services. There's a separate paramedic unit that's a regional unit uh that's licensed to the state of New Jersey, not to, and not to the town of Carney, that provides advanced life support services. Um, so, so for basic.
I was actually going to mention most of that, but even with our firemen being EMTs, they cannot transport a patient on the fire truck. We have to wait for an ambulance for transportation. So therefore, we really need to have ambulances functioning, even if it were state, to be stationed at a firehouse to be dispatched if need be.
Correct. That is one of the issues we need to look at um as well as the mutual aid service, yes.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
John McCaffrey.
Mr. McCaffrey.
How you doing, Mayor and Council? This is John McCaffrey. I am obviously retiring on June first. I just wanted to thank the council for uh accepting my resolution for retirement. I wanted to thank the mayor and council for your kind words. I also wanted to thank uh the Carney Fire Department, including Chief Miss Andrea and his staff for their support of myself over the past thirty years. And also like to thank the mayor and council for the support of the Carney Fire Department in that time. And just wanted to let you know that you would think it's a happy time to retire, but it's actually very difficult leaving your job that you love for thirty years. And with that being said, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Captain, uh, I want to uh thank you again for, for your service thirty years. And uh, what, Captain, have you planned it out yet?
Um, actually, what was that? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Uh, what's your next chapter? Have you planned it out yet? Or are you just going to take it day by day?
Oh, well, I'm going to be spending time with my family. My daughter's in college and we want to go see her uh a little more to- often down in Florida.
Wonderful. But we wish you very best and uh, and uh, and once again, thank you for uh uh three decades of service.
Thank you.
Captain McCaffrey, I just want to say, I, you know, the bittersweet nature of leaving a job you love is um Captain McCaffrey, I just want to say, I, you know, the bittersweet nature of leaving a job you love is um. It's tough, you know, um, but it's awfully nice for you to be able to know what what you have left. You know, what a legacy you leave behind is it's a wonderful thing to be proud of and and although it's bittersweet. I'm pretty sure a few days after you're out, you're not gonna miss it as much as you think.
Hey, thank you for the kind words.
Good luck, John, you and Annie. Good luck. Enjoy the travel to Florida.
Thank you very much, Kyle.
You're welcome, sweetie.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
What was that? Well, I love the name.
James Mangan.
Jim.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Jim, how are you?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, I apologize. I I missed the first half hour of the meeting. I had another meeting. Um, but I was looking for the intro of the budget. Um, I just wanted you to just explain uh, what happened with that. I know it was on the agenda.
Uh, yeah, we had a lengthy um, presentation, well, not lengthy, a a. A presentation by the town CFO, uh, Schway Frosby. I know you're CFO too, Jim, so you could probably share thoughts and ideas and exchange ideas with them. Uh, and the town auditor, Stephen Wilcox. Um, the budget was a very solid, uh, very solid budget. We're building off of um. Close to sixteen million in surplus from last year using only four bit of this budget. Uh, the biggest appropriation increase was for pensions. As I'm sure you're uh, having the same issue in Hackensack.
Yeah, we are.
Uh, the biggest issue was pensions. That's a half a million dollar increase. But our revenues came in very strong. Our tax collection rate was one of the highest it's ever been. Our tax base is growing. Um, in the last five years, it's grown in market valuation. Uh, something like a hundred and sixty five million dollars. So it's a growing ratable base, growing revenues also. Um, with the pilots adding to it. It's only one part of the picture. Uh, good budgeting, um, you know, but most departments are in line with inflation except for things like the pension costs going up. So it's a positive budget, a strong budget, um, and debt servicing is flat. Um, we just issued a a a large, uh, we just went through market and. Um, that rates if 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 Hackensack is considering doing it, uh, which I believe we got one point eight five. Or one point eight six on a on a thirty year, which is pretty phenomenal, lowest we've ever gotten. Uh, so so it's a it's a it's a solid budget. Municipal tax rate goes down. Uh, about eighty dollars, um, or actually a little bit more than eighty dollars on the. On the um, on the average assessment, but I I know you know this, municipal tax rate is just one component. Um, there's an increase, um, a little bit more than inflation for the school district. And a moderate decrease in the county tax. So there's an overall net decrease of um. Uh, very modest net decrease overall, but the municipal portion of it uh, goes down about a little bit over eighty dollars on the average household. Um, and I believe this is the fourth or the fifth year in a row that the municipal rate goes modestly down. Uh, some years the schools go up more, not some years, one year. Uh, but overall, the tax rate has been stable or slightly decreasing over the last five years. So. We're in good stead. We um, we were just upgraded by Moody's. Uh, they look back five years. Um, and so it's 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 good. For all the hard years we had, especially during the great recession. Um, it's now financially, um, it's it's things are in order.
Yeah, I I wasn't surprised by the uh, by the Moody's upgrade, you know, because, you know, your credit rating was was pretty low. Um, and truthfully, you know, I've been following it since around twenty sixteen. Um, and I'll be honest, you know, especially with last year's budget, I was really concerned about your surplus, you know. Uh, surplus, you know, up until twenty nineteen was really, really dangerously low. Uh, what would happen is you guys would finish a year with like one point nine million in surplus. And put one point eight million into the budget and you did that a few years in a row. Now you do that, yeah, and and Moody's is gonna have a problem with it and you are gonna get downgraded.
You're looking, you're looking farther back than five years. The last five years, the surplus has gone two hundred, up two hundred and twenty eight percent.
Well, that's that's what, yeah, that's what I'm confused about because I'm getting your your surplus number from your audit. Let me let me finish, okay? Uh, your your press release says, you know, that twenty nineteen, you know, your your surplus is up to eleven point nine million. But your twenty nineteen audit says that your surplus is at six point one million. Uh, and I know how Moody's uh, looks at fund balance, you know, so it's not like, uh, you know, they're looking at something else.
So, correct.
Why is that?
Correct. So the Moody's uh, report is posted on the Moody's website. I'm sure you know. Um, and the surplus was eleven point nine twelve million in uh, twenty nineteen and it. Um, went up to sixteen million.
According to what? Not according to your audit?
So if you, according to the audits that were, you're looking at earlier years. So let me just go to the key part of the Moody's credit report. And let me read it into the record. Uh, by the way, eight three, I believe, is comparable with the state of New Jersey. Financial operations and reserves dramatically improved finances. Uh, the town's finances will remain healthy. As the town continues its recent trend of conservative budgeting. Uh, the reported fund balance was largely unchanged at seven point nine percent of current fund revenue. Uh, current fund balance was eleven point nine million or fifteen point four percent of revenue. Up from eight point three million or eleven point three percent of revenue the prior year. So we went from eight point three in eighteen to eleven point nine in nineteen to sixteen in twenty. This represents, this is Moody's, this represents a material improvement over the past five years. Adjusted fund balance is up two hundred and twenty eight percent. I would ask you to find me any municipality in the state of New Jersey who's had their fund balance go up two hundred twenty eight percent.
Yeah, well, Hackensack has, but um, but what I'm not understanding is.
What's Hackensack's rating?
What? Uh, we have a double A two S and P.
S and P. Why did Moody's rate you at?
Uh, the last Moody's rating was twenty thirteen. It was double A three. Um, but that was, that was, you know, eight years ago. But what I'm I'm still not understanding why Moody's is saying you've got. Uh, twelve million in surplus, but your order is saying you've got six million in surplus. And even mayor, when you just read from the report, you know, where they said seven point nine percent of revenue. But your press release says it's at fifteen percent of revenue and I've got the Moody's report right here. I I subscribe to Moody's, you know. I subscribe to Moody's and I have Carney on a uh, you know, on a on a tickler, so. Every time there's a rating action, you know, I I do get it, but I just can't reconcile. The surplus number that you're saying and versus the surplus number that's in the audit. You know, which again, that's what Moody's goes by.
Right, and I just read you Moody's report. They had the benefit of five years of audits. They had the benefit of five years of budgets. Uh, they sat down with the auditor. They sat down with the CFO. Uh, so, uh, and I read you the report. Uh, and I encourage you to speak to Mr. Frosby uh, directly. I'm sorry you were late to the meeting and you didn't have uh, that opportunity. Uh, and I'm trying, I'm looking around here because I'm trying to find.
Well, here, Mayor, what you do, just pull up your twenty nineteen audit, look at your schedule A one. Yeah, which is current fund and you'll see fund balance December thirty first, twenty nineteen, six million, one hundred twenty one thousand.
Yeah, so uh, you should check with uh, Moody's uh, credit report on their website. Look at the language that I read. Uh, you should also check with CFO.
I said, I I have the, I have the report from Moody's and. Or Moody's doesn't give a dollar amount of what your surplus is. I got that from your press release.
Okay, so uh, I I think I read the language once, Jim. So if if you wish to repeat yourself, you're free to repeat yourself.
Okay, well then, let me, I'll, we'll play this game. Then let me ask you this question, right? Can you explain why your audit says six million, but you're claiming it's twelve million in surplus?
Uh, let me read you the language. The town twenty nineteen Moody's adjusted current fund balance was eleven point nine million. Or fifteen point four percent of revenue. Up from eight point three million or eleven point three percent of revenue. The prior year. This represents a material improvement. Over the past five years, adjusted fund balance is up two hundred twenty eight percent. In addition, the town maintains additional proceeds in reserve from property sale that's not going to current fund balance. This material, let me finish. This material improvement in reserves has been driven by a number of factors. First, management has made material efforts over the past few years to budget more conservatively. They then refer to attrition. And here's an important point. Finally, the strong tax base growth. Has given the town tremendous flexibility to cut taxes and thus encourage even more development. While not actually losing any revenue. Although twenty twenty audited figures were not yet available. Preliminary results show the town was largely unimpacted. The strong tax collections are noteworthy. Uh, since property taxes are the largest source of revenue, as they are in every municipality in the state. Uh, and then it goes on, uh. See liquidity. As reserves have increased, so has liquidity. After years of. Uh, cash flow notes, Carney has gone three years without issuing any cash flow notes. At the end of twenty nineteen, current fund cash was twelve point eight million. Or sixteen point seven percent of revenue.
Okay, and current fund cash is is meaningless. It's just how much cash you have in the bank, but I'll tell you why I'm concerned, okay? Is because, like I said, if you go back to your old budgets, okay, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, all right? What you did was you guys utilized every dollar of surplus that you had into your budget, okay? And then that keeps surplus at a really low level. That's dangerous. But then starting in twenty seventeen, I noticed your surplus started going up, okay? You went from, remember. You went from one point four million in twenty sixteen to five point four million twenty seventeen. That's good. Six million in twenty eighteen, good. Six million again in twenty nineteen, that's good. And all the, all that time, you kept the amount of surplus putting into your budget at one point four million. That's very good, okay? That's how you build surplus. That's how you build your credit rating. But then in twenty twenty, you know, and I was really impressed by the fact that my taxes didn't go up last year. Then I looked and I saw you used four million in surplus. So in other words, you had six million. And you used four million into your budget. Now that's a huge increase from prior years. So I I'd be really interested in what your fund balance was as of twelve thirty one twenty. But uh, when I went on the website, your twenty twenty annual financial statement's not posted. Um, I'm sure it's done. It was due May, uh, March fifth and and you can't introduce a budget without it. But um, and I didn't get a chance to to put an Oprah request in. It is supposed to be on your website. Uh, did, and I know you said Schway's not not here right now, uh, but do you know what fund balance is? As of December thirty first of twenty twenty?
Yeah, Schway reported on it, the CFO reported the number at the beginning. Uh, of the meeting and it's consistent with the preliminary numbers that Moody's reviewed. So we're using again.
That's impossible.
Just let me finish. I know what you're doing, Jim. Uh, we used again, we're using again four million of surplus in this year's budget. But we've actually generated more than in nineteen than in twenty.
So and what what's the, what's the number as of the end of twenty?
Balance actually will go up again, so.
What is your fund balance at the end of twenty twenty?
I just answered your question and you're trying.
No, no, it's a number. What is the number?
Thank you. This is the thing. You're not getting the answers you want. You wait until the auditor and CFO are not on the line. You get answers you don't want to hear and then you're trying to.
I'm not getting an answer.
Trying to confuse me on technical.
No, yeah, I'm I'm honestly, Mayor, I'm not trying to confuse you, okay? On your annual financial statement, okay, on twenty, there is a number. It says fund balance as of December thirty first, twenty twenty. I'd be really interested in knowing what that number is. Because you're using four million, you said, in your budget. Now, you can't use four million if you don't have four million.
No, see, that's where you're, that's where you're deliberately distorting it, Jim, and you know what you're doing. Do you want me to read the language again?
No, no, I don't care about the Moody's report. I care about your audit.
Let me read it again. The town's twenty nineteen.
Have the report, Al, okay? Look, we've done this before.
Current fund balance was eleven point nine million. That's.
No, and that's impossible. If that's what you're saying, Mayor, then you're completely wrong. And honestly, then that means that you don't have a clue as to what your surplus is. It is not eleven million dollars. It is, that's the number that's gonna end up in your audit. It's impossible.
So the current, and then for twenty, it got even better. So we're, we're appropriating again four million of the prior year surplus. But we generate it in twenty and I'm sure Schway has a reason why the annual financial statement isn't posted yet. But instead of eleven point nine million, we're at sixteen million. So I'm not quite sure why you refuse to believe these numbers.
Because I go, I'm going by your audit.
Sure why you refuse to believe Moody's. I'm not quite sure.
I believe, I believe your audit before I believe anything else. That's the official permanent record of what your finances are. And at the end of twenty nineteen, you had six million dollars in surplus. And if you're saying that now you have fifteen.
Uh, I am saying that uh, you're mistaken, Jim.
Not fifteen million, I'm sorry, you said twelve million. And what I'm saying is you don't have twelve million dollars in surplus, okay? I would love to know what that number is, okay?
But we, we actually, I read you the part of the language about land sales. Uh, so the and the cash liquidity of the town from the report. So to the extent, uh, the numbers I'm providing are conservative. Uh, the numbers we're providing are numbers that have been audited and have been reviewed by Moody's. Um, and um, you're mistaken.
Okay, I'm mistaken. Your audit says that you had six million dollars in nineteen. You're saying Moody's says you have eleven point nine million dollars in surplus and I'm.
No, I, no, our audit is is the exact same as what Moody's said.
You just said Moody's says in twenty nineteen, our surplus was eleven point nine million. Your audit says it was six million. Mayor, just if you could, check out the notes, all right? This isn't the first time you didn't believe number. I told you that we're in an audit. We've done this before. The reason that I'm concerned is because, but let me just finish my point, you know, and then you can say anything you want, all right, and I'll get out of your hair. All right, the reason I'm concerned is because your budgets have a history of these one-shot revenues, okay? And last year, using four million, when you normally use one point four million in surplus, is a one-shot revenue. Now, if you're gonna regenerate more, hey, that's great, but I don't think that you are. I'd be really interested in knowing what that one number is. What is the amount of surplus at the end of last year? Okay, and the reason I'm saying, like I said, because if not, it's a one-shot revenue, all right? And that's what I just, I just would like to see you avoid, all right?
So here, let me, let me repeat. You're wrong. You're wrong, uh.
Your audit is wrong?
You keep saying your audit as if you're the bearer of the truth. We just heard from our CFO.
Your audit is the truth.
No, you're interrupting. Let me speak. Your time is up, Jim. Then you say a minute ago, you can then say whatever you want. So here, here's my minute. So. You're saying that this is your audit as if you're the authenticator and what you're saying is the truth. We heard from our CFO, certified. We heard from our CFO, certified professional. We heard from our town auditor, who has audited our budget regularly or audits municipal budgets regularly. You have a Moody's credit report. I read you the language. I told you how much of surplus we used in the twenty budget, how much of surplus we're planning to use in the twenty-one budget, how much we generated in twenty was sixteen million and the prior year was eleven point nine million.
I'm sorry, Mayor, if you could, could you just, I'm sorry, could you just repeat that?
So let me finish the point. So we, most municipalities, most local entities will appropriate a portion of prior year's surplus in the current year, as long as you're generating the same or more. That is a, I mean, that's not unusual. I'm probably being very conservative with that language. So we're growing current fund balance by over two hundred percent in the last five years. Again, I put out there which other municipality has grown current fund balance by that amount over five years. I know you say hack and sack, double A's in prime either, Jim, so don't pat yourself on the back.
No, no, that's a horrible credit rating, but you, before you said sixteen million, what year, what year did you generate sixteen million? Was that nineteen or twenty?
Twenty. And eleven point nine the previous year. So, so, so that's the truth. The budget hasn't been this strong in, in, in many, many years. We have.
Mayor, if you have, if you have sixteen million in surplus, I'll, I'll give you a lot of credit, you know?
We have generated numbers like this in many years. We've enabled four consecutive years of reductions in the municipal tax rate, not one. And it's largely a credit to the work of Carney CFO, Finance Department, and the right policies that were adopted in terms of making sure appropriations that we can control, we can't control pension costs, but appropriations that we can control are capital level inflation or lower. And we grow our revenues and we grow our revenues through an increase in the tax base of the number I used earlier over five years, market value in excess of a hundred and fifty million dollars over five years, which is, which is a positive because if you can grow your tax base, it's less burden of the tax rate. So those are the numbers. So I, I know there may be motivation to try to take something that's positive and try to create negatives, but I don't think, I don't think, I don't think that's factually correct. I know it's not factually correct. And I think the work of the CFO, the town CFO, the town auditor on this are exemplary. And anything to question that work and those numbers is, I think, really a poor choice.
I'm not questioning your CFO or your order.
I'm not questioning that Moody's report, definitely. Stop Mr. Mangan, next speaker, Madam.
No, Al, one last question.
Madam Clark, speaker.
John Pinho.
Okay, John, can you get big?
John Pinho, was that the former county council, so Carney Councilman James Mangan?
Yes. I'm sure you know him, don't you?
Yes. Um, Mayor, if he's still on the Zoom call, do you want to apologize to him for not heeding his warnings on the Keegan landfill so many years ago?
I'll wait till you're finished on your comments, Mr. Pinho, and then I'll respond.
Okay, that was my, my question.
Are you done?
Yes.
Mr. Castro, Madam Clark, is, is Mr. Pinho mooted?
No. Yes, now he is. Eileen Verdi, oh, you're going to make a comment, sorry.
No, I would like to make a comment. That's creative history. We took actions to fight for the closure of the landfill and it was a community fight. We were successful, as everyone in this community knows. This is a landfill that opened in nineteen fifty that took all sorts of waste, including chemical waste and petroleum waste on site. That was leaching for years into the Carney Marsh on town-owned property from landfilling that was done in the fifties and the sixties. It stopped in the nineteen seventies by the operator of that landfill, MSLA, John Keegan. But the landfill was never properly closed because the liability to close it was over thirty million dollars to build a slurry wall and a cap. That was never done. It was never done by any prior administration. The town of Carney negotiated with the predecessor of the Sports Authority in agreement in two thousand and five, where there would be a story wall built to contain the leach aid from the marsh that wouldn't affect the freshwater marsh and Frank's Creek and to cap it and to turn it into recreational fields. After several years of operation and the cap being reached, Sports Authority did not want to stop landfilling because it was a revenue source for them. We then went to court. We lost our legal action against them. We then undertook a community protest. We went to repeated meetings at the Meadowland Sports Authority and we were ultimately successful because as a state-owned landfill, state of New Jersey should not be in the business of landfilling. That's what happened with the Keegan landfill. I do not know, do not know any course of action, which either Mr. Mangan or you, Mr. Pinho, or anybody else had said to do something differently. We all opposed the landfill. We all, you know, you know, by, by the time Jim and Matt, Jim Mangan and I are paying attention to politics in town, the activity had, the active activity had ceased, but the fires, there were multiple fires in that landfill. There was a fire that went on for over a week in the nineties in the Keegan landfill as petroleum products in the ground, they were dumped directly into the ground, just ignited and would not go out. That's, there were, there were RICO claims and criminal allegations back in the seventies in part related to the Keegan landfill that scarred this community. There was a terrible history to this. We finally righted that history. We righted that history by having that slurry wall built to stop the environmental contamination. We righted that history by having a cap installed. We righted that history by going to court and engaging in a community fight to stop the capping with, with materials that were decomposing into hydrogen sulfide that were never supposed to go there, never supposed to go there. And now that we're approaching a final closure with the contouring being completed later this year, most of the contouring being done already and an impermeable liner then being installed, now that we're finally getting everything, there's this effort to try to create a narrative that's different or to blame the current administration or me or for something that's just not true. Knowing how much work has gone into this, how much expense has gone into this, how much environmental damage was done already, to now try to change that narrative and have a question, would that be posed to me in a public setting to, or a political point in a political campaign? I think it's unfortunate, but I guess it's the time we live in and I have the right to defend myself and I just did. Next speaker, Madam Clark.
Eileen Verdi, and Mayor, for the record, Shway Frazee is back on the line at five fifty-three P. M.
At eight fifty-three.
Eight fifty-three.
Nine fifty-three, excuse me. You said I thought you said five fifty-three. That's what I heard. You said nine fifty-three, excuse me, Lila. Ms. Verdi.
Ms. Verdi, you, you're able to talk.
I think Shway is on the line.
Shway, can you talk or no?
Oh, we're going to Ms. Verdi.
Oh. She's.
Ms. Verdi, if you could please unmute yourself.
Got, got me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Um, as you know, I live on John Hay Avenue. Now Marjim took down their, their barn that was in back of our houses and that was a sound bumper for us. Right now, you could see, you could hear everything that's going on on that site. So I would like, like, one of you to go down there and, I mean, it is so noisy. And the other thing is there's no more privacy. I mean, you could look at your windows and you could see all the workers and, and everything else that's going on. It's really, really noisy because that barn was like, it extended like through old houses, you know? And one of my neighbors even says, you know, they can see right into my, into my bedrooms and everything here. The other thing is they have a security light and that shines right into our, our bedroom. I'm saying it, it's like, I would say from ten John Hay all the way down to, all the way down to like twenty John Hay. So I think maybe that's looked into, maybe there's some, there's no, there's absolutely no trees on that paper road. All gone and there's debris. I tried to clear some of it out in the back of my house and on twenty, twenty John Hay, there's a, there's a tree that's falling, but I paid just last week five hundred dollars to get rid of the tree that was, it's not even on my property, but it was, it was damaging my fence. Okay, so I had to get, I, I got rid of that tree myself, but there's so much debris like in the back of the houses. I mean, this, this paper road does not belong to, I don't even think it belongs to Carney. I think it belongs to Hudson County. It's sewer drain that goes like through it and you can't even pave it. Well, that's what's going on there and it goes down the street. This has been since Marjim moved in. We still have, I guess, it's trailers, you know, the back of the trailers and they're putting debris back there. We're getting, we have rodents and we have cats. Thank God we have a colony of cats that are keeping down the, keeping down the rodent. And that's what's going down on John Hay. And now that, you know, we have kids, we have plenty of kids and families down here and I've seen rats running because they took down, they took down the, the barn, so of course they have no place to go. So they're, you know, they're, they're in everything. I mean, we have, we have a zoo down here running around, but the cats have been keeping, the colony has been keeping everything down. But it's just that the noise, if you ever come down here and you see in the back where the barn was, that was a great sound buffer. I don't know what can be done. If they could put something up, could they put a, a privacy fence up?
Well, I don't know if they have, Ms. Verdi, I don't know if they have final site approvals for the site or not. I thought that there had been a change in ownership or possible foreclosure on the underlying property. That was a couple of years ago and I don't know what happened to the actual final approvals for the site. Is Mr. Chisari on the line? I don't know if he knows. If not, we will have to get back to you, Ms. Verdi, and maybe we could also, the fourth ward council.
I'm not, I'm just not saying this for myself. I'm saying it's all with the neighbor.
No, I, I understand. I understand your comment, but if there isn't fi- final site approval for the use, then there would be an opportunity there to ask for some kind of buffer, whether it's in order to, to, to replace what, what that structure used to do in terms of acoustics. And we can also try to take a look at ourselves and see, it's hard to visualize. Oh, I remember the barn structure. It's hard to visualize or the impact without actually seeing it and hearing it. If, if Mr. Chisari's on the line, if not, then at the next meeting, we'll have an answer as to whether that could be a possible way to ask the property owner to create some kind of buffer between his property and, and your and your neighbor's backyards.
And it's, it's the lights that come into their bedroom. I mean, my bedroom is in the front, it really doesn't bother me, but if I had kids that were in my back bedroom, those lights are like those stadium lights and they go right into the people's bedroom, you know?
Mr. Chisari, I see you're there. Do you know if, if that property owner still has to go to the board for approval?
No, I don't have the resolution or any of the documents in front of me, but I believe they have received all their approval from the zoning board already. I think that's already been approved.
Okay, I, I thought they were beyond the original approvals and they had to go back.
Well, they did request an extension and then they ended up getting in to, to get their approvals. Basically permits for demolition then and new construction of some of the smaller structures that they planned on, on rebuilding.
So was there a hearing on that or is that all in accordance with the zoning for the area?
Well, there was a hearing. The zoning board heard it.
How about the trailers that are down the end of the street with garbage and, or whatever they put in? That are still there. They were supposed to do something about that.
The trailers on their property or on, on the, on the gravel road?
It's, it's, it's on John Hay. It's not on, it's not on the paper road. It's, they have property from where they took the barn down, but across, it's on John Hay. It's right near L and R. They have trailers that, that are filled with junk, I guess, and if they're all rotting, rotting out.
Well, they have to have, if they're on the street, the trailers, they have to have permits to be on the street. There's a limited time.
Not on the street, they're on their property. It used to be a parking lot for, for the other owners, but they put in the trail, they put in trailers there and they're jumping, I guess, they're dumping the, you know, the rotten or whatever they don't use, like the. the rotten or whatever they don't use, like the plywood and all of that. They're putting that into the trailer, into those trailers.
What what, do you recall how the approvals before the board addressed waste disposal? Tony, was there supposed to be a segregated area?
I I can't comment on that. I don't have any of that in front of me and I wasn't at the meeting. I'm not part of those meetings.
Can you see how the how the approvals?
I mean, they do keep, I I gotta say that they do keep the the property neat. And they do keep it clean and they do keep it, you know, weed wax and all of that, you know? But, um, it, I mean, it it really, if you came down there, I mean, we have houses that are that people are repairing down here, um, and some of them are new, you know? So, um, somebody really has to look at that. It's like what, why is it this year? You know?
Let 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 I'll ask Tony also to take a look at it to see, uh, that, uh.
It's on John, it's on John Hay. It is on John Hay. It's not on the paper road. It's the trailer that are filled with debris, but you could, if you walk on the paper road and go all the way down, you can, you could see that.
Okay. We'll take a look. Do your theory.
And the other thing is, is it's kind of funny because, um, you know, we had houses that were demolished and Marjum, of course, um, they bought the lot, okay? So there's, um, a driveway that that's no longer there. And you painted like, you know, the, um, parking spaces for for cars. And it's kind of funny because there's no, everybody parks in the drive, the driveway spaces that the house is no longer exist. So that's kind of funny, too. The whole street is sort of like weird.
Uh, Tony, could you look into, um, whether the the use of the property is consistent with the approvals they received?
Yes, I will.
Um, and I'm assuming, I I can't, I I'm visualizing the paper road and John Hay, Ms. Verdi. But, you know, I have to actually see where where things are, as does Tony. I'm assuming that you said the the containers are all on their property, right? Not on any, neither the paper.
It's not on anybody, it's not on anybody's property. The problem is, um, is it's filling up to the end, like to believe it. You know, it's, it's, they're rotting. They're they're like, I don't know. They're big containers of, um, you know, but trucks, truck containers. Dump them off and putting debris in there, whatever they're doing with that.
Right, typically on on site plan approvals for either zoning or the planning board, uh, we look at where garbage and waste is to be dealt before it's taken off site. Um, so usually that's addressed in a in a site plan. So that's probably one of the things we will need to check to see.
And and the other, the other, the other thing there is, um, we used to have trees on the paper road. We keep, um, like the dirt and everything. We don't, we don't care if it's it's paved or not, you know? But there's no trees. There's nothing back there. All the trees are gone.
On the paper road. I don't know.
If you want to plant some trees, plant some trees there. We need them. The only trees that I have is, uh, the two fruit trees that I have, like right in the back of my house and, uh, one of my neighbors. Those are the only trees that exist now on that road.
On on John Hay or on the paper road?
On the paper road.
On the paper road? Okay, I don't know. We have the, uh, we would have to look at the ownership.
I don't know if you have, sorry. Right.
Right, even if it if it's on paper, it means we have the right of way if we ever build a road, but it it may still have some, uh, other ownership.
I think it belongs to Hudson County because it's the, um, it's the sewer drain.
Okay, let let us check to see who, how the ownership, uh, I think in theory it's supposed to run all the way up to Ivy Street, right? Through, cut through. Yeah, cut through Skylar, through through that block, through that, through that business and come out on Ivy.
Right.
But let me, let us look into that. If if we can plant the trees, we will. I don't know if we can on that paper road, but let us check.
Okay, and the the other thing is, how come you don't have any trees down on the oval? Everyone has been asking that question.
Well, it's art, uh, well, most of it is artificial turf. Uh, I don't know if there's any room for natural landscaping. You're probably right. There I don't recall.
It's so hot down there. You walk down there at 80 degrees, you're gonna get a sunburn. Like you, you can't, you don't walk that track. There's nothing there.
Mayor, we, Mayor, just.
Yeah. Everyone has been asking that question. Where do these trees go? Maybe I'm a free person. I don't know.
Mayor, we added some trees to the entrance. Um, we added about four or five trees that'll grow. We can add some additional landscaping in the the lawn area and the entrance, and we did add some by the flagpole. Uh, by the basketball courts. The rest of the site is a is a is a capped site. And it is a, uh, is completely turned and there are really no areas that that we really can plant trees. But we could look into it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I guess it it is now that the facility is built, it's 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 a challenge. Especially when you're going through cap material, right? And you can't break to break the, uh, I guess it depends on how you plant the tree and where you plant the tree. So if you could look to see if there are any locations for trees. Um. And decide.
I'm just saying, it'll it'll cool things down down there if it's really, you know, it's going to be one hot plate shape.
Mayor, we'll look to see if we can add, uh, find any locations.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Verdi. Um, I think we have our CFO back on the line. Shway, are you there?
I'm here.
Um, and and you could always, there's a recording. You could always go back to it tomorrow, but just a a couple of points that if you can clarify on us, it's just probably basic concepts. Because I think there were basic con- concepts that were used in ways to try to create a different narrative. Uh, the difference, uh, the between adjusted fund balance and surplus. Difference between an audit and an annual financial statement. Um, and how much surplus we've generated in la- uh, last year, 19 and 20, the last two years. And how much we've used in the following year budget because um, the the allegation was that it's a one-time gimmick. Uh, we're using surplus that's not going to be, uh, regenerated. And when I try to read components uh, of the Moody's credit report, um, it sort of went in circles on adjusted fund balance and surplus, and this is not what your audit says. And and so it maybe it would just be good to explain those basic concepts. So
Sure.
so the general public can follow it, uh, and then just restate probably what you said at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, I'll start with fund balance and surplus. They are basically the same thing. In the private sector, we refer to it as surplus. In the government sector, we call it fund balance. There's a difference between audited fund balance and an unaudited fund balance. The 2019 audited surplus or fund balance was 6 million and change. A 2020 annual financial statement, uh, which is unaudited, it's prepared by myself, is showing the fund balance at $12 million. During 2020, during 2020, we used $4 million of the $6 million fund balance from 2019 audit. And we regenerated a little over $10 million in 2020. $6 million start. Add the $10 million, just to keep the numbers simple, and subtract out the $4 million that we used in 2020. That leaves you with a little over $12 million, and that's what we quoted earlier in the meeting. And from that $12 million, we are planning on using $5 million for the upcoming year's budget, which is this year's budget.
Okay. Okay.
Now, if you want to get into how we got to the $10 million that we regenerated, I will go by my memory as much as I can, but I'll be happy to generate the list as to how that $10 million came into be.
Correct, so we're generating more, so fund balance and surplus um, are the same concepts. We're generating more surplus fund balance than we're using. Uh, and there's been an upward trend, I quoted the Moody's report a couple of times. Uh, a clear upward trend in the last five years. Um. Okay, so what was the 16 unaudited number for 2020? That's the 12 plus the 4?
No, there is no 16 number. There's a 12 number, which is a result of starting balance, 10 million regenerated during 2020, minus 4 million that was used for the 2020 budget.
Okay, let me, let me read you then, uh, the Moody's component. Unaudited 2020 numbers um, show that the reported fund balance figure more than doubled to 12.4 million.
Correct, so that is correct.
Sentence, while the adjusted while the adjusted fund balance figure increased to 16.1 million.
I am not sure how they're getting the 16 million.
That was, and it came up during our Moody's presentation. Um, and that was, uh, the town auditor also used that number um, for the adjusted fund balance figure.
Unless you're, unless you're only using what you started out with and what you generated and not factoring in what you used during 2020 for the budget itself.
Right, because you're using four. So you went from 12 to 16 and then used four of it. I think.
Yeah, so basically, go ahead.
Right, so so that's, that's where the 16 number came. So you used four, but you generated 16 is what I believe for 20 is what um, with the prior year, you had generated 12.4 uh, million. So you've increased the current fund balance from, you're still using 4 million both years, 19 and 20. But it increased from 12.4 to 16.1 million uh, on unaudited numbers. So that those were, I mean, those were uh, and then there's the annual financial statement. He asked a question about why it wasn't posted on the website. Sure will be posted soon. Um, and, uh, he, uh, but it was really trying to dilute those, uh, current fund balance numbers, which are surplus numbers and, uh, which are used interchangeably. Um, and trying to say that, um, it is a one-year occurrence, not a multi-year occurrence. And actually disputing.
It has been a number of years since we have used any one-time revenues to balance the budget. I can say that confidently.
No, I think he knows that. That was just the way to create doubt, but I think he knows that. Um, I, so it it is clearly not a one, one-time revenue. But I I did read the language repeatedly about the five-year uh, look back and the increase in adjusted fund balance of 228% in the report. Uh, and then he shifted to audited versus unaudited, um, to try not to address those numbers. So, so, um, I mean, it it is just basic concepts. Just the fund balance, the surplus. Uh, if you're gonna use surplus from the prior year in your current year, you want to generate more surplus than you're using, so your total surplus, adjusted fund balance doesn't go down year to year.
And you don't want to use all of your surplus. You want to keep some as your reserve.
Correct. You you allocate some for reserve or uncollected taxes, but but the key principle is if you want to grow an adjusted fund balance, so if you always generate more than you use, that number by definition goes up. Which is what has happened in the last five years, which is one of the key factors that this report reported a whole section on as to why there's, you know, a double level, double-prong upgrade. So I just want to get those basic, so so, you know, an audit, your audit says this and your, your number. You know, read the Moody's report. It's publicly available. Uh, post the AFS, um, on the website. And, um, you know, the numbers, as as we said earlier in the meeting, Shway, but we acknowledged your efforts. Uh, the numbers are very good. Thank you, Shway. Thank you again. Thank you for coming back on, uh, during your evening. Uh, I think we're done with speakers. Correct, Madam Clark?
Uh, no, Mayor, we have another speaker, Sidney Ferrera.
Okay. Mr. Ferrera.
Sidney has the ability to talk. Just unmute.
Hi, hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for taking my call. Um, so I just had a couple of questions. Uh, you had a question in regards to the recent, um, the recent case, uh, that Alexis Campos and I, um, attended. Uh, and the the mayor, just for the record, the mayor, uh, did not attend, um, even though he was uh, named in the lawsuit. Uh, I just wanted to know, because I just recently found out, um, well, I mean, I kind of, the name sounded very familiar, but now I realize that Castano, who was the attorney that, uh, represented, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, um, actually not you uh, as mayor, but represented you as chairman of the demo- of the Town Democratic Party. So I just had a question. I wanted to know, uh, being that Castano is the town attorney, uh, was his bill or will his bill be paid by the town or will it be paid by the organization that objected to, um, to, uh, Ms. Campos's candidacy?
Um, I'm gonna, Mr. Ferrer, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna make one comment that I'm gonna let Mr. Bruno respond to you, the town attorney, uh, who works with Mr. Castano. Uh, you sued, uh, Ms. Carpenter in her capacity as town clerk. Uh, and you sued me in my, in your own complaint, in my capacity as mayor. Uh, so Jim, do you wish to answer?
Uh, yes. So, um, the action taken by the town clerk, and as the mayor stated earlier when we were acknowledging town clerks, was a statutory action that she and only she had the ability to respond to in her position as town clerk whenever objections are filed through any petition by anybody. Um, so the, uh, the origin of the, um, objection is not the issue. The issue is, the issue was, uh, the town clerk made a decision and was then sued and then her, and she did that in her official capacity as town clerk. And the town attorney, uh, had the ability to represent the town clerk um, in that matter. And so, yes, that was billed to the town because we are defending the town clerk in the, um, in in the, um, in in her actions, in her official capacity as town clerk.
Well, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't the, it wasn't the town clerk and it wasn't, uh, the mayor who objected. You know, the the objection was signed by the chairman of the Democratic Party of the town, which is the mayor. So I believe that organization should have paid for the bill. I don't think that it should be billed to the town. Uh, our campaign paid for the filing of the lawsuit. Uh, so I also think it was, uh, it it should have been paid by the mayor, but besides that. Well, 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 besides that, the, these are my 10.
Let me finish.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, these are my 10 minutes.
No, 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 no.
I I am gonna ask you another question. So by trade.
For a minute.
By trade, you are an attorney. By trade, you are, by trade, you are an attorney.
For a minute.
As an attorney, as an attorney, if you you filed this case, you filed this case, why could you not do it pro bono? Why could you not defend yourself? Why did you not show up to the court case? Why did you, uh, have the town attorney? Fight this court case and then have the town pay for it? When it's something that you know farewell, that this was frivolous and you know farewell, fairly well, that the county rejected your objection. They objected your objection and you continued to object this to disenfranchise a thirty-six-year resident of the town. She's a thirty-six-year resident of the town. If you are saying that she cannot run in the second ward, mayor, then you are saying. Because she lives there now. She just moved to the second ward now. So you're saying she can't run in the second ward. She can't run in the third ward where she moved from. So you in effect are, you in effect, because the county refused to do it. So you in effect are disqualifying a thirty-six-year citizen, uh, resident of this town from running at all in council. And she got all these signatures. She went from house to house gathering signatures and you refused, you refused that. So you shut down the voices of the people who signed the petition and you shut down a young person who wants to get involved in our system. So you shut that down, mayor, and I might add that I am very disappointed. I am extremely disappointed that the person that is running against Ms. Campos did not do anything, did not object to this. He did not object to this. You objected to it. He did not object to it and he did not defend it. And not one council member defended this. So are we saying that? Uh, a, a, a lifelong resident, she was born in this town. That, that to me is, you know, and we, we want to call ourselves Democrats, part of the Democratic Party, and we're shutting down people from joining the democratic process? That, that's what you did here, mayor. That to me is just, it's disheartening, you know, a, as a member of the Democratic Party, you know, since, since I was able to vote. That our party did this to us. And this is someone who was an unaffiliated voter and joined the Democratic Party. And you disenfranchised her and you disenfranchised everyone who signed for her. That, that's, you know, just to prove a point, just to prove that you can get away with this. And we went before a judge who lives in town, who, before this call, which I found very weird. He asked me if, 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 um, he asked me if I felt, uh, that I should, uh, that he should be recused. And you know what? I didn't want to seem that petty. But honestly, I should have done that. I should have asked him to recuse. Himself from, 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 uh, uh, from hearing this case. Because I don't think, if this, if this went further, I don't think that you guys would have won, you know? I, a part of me wanted to take it further and a part of me didn't, because I want to focus on the campaign. I want to be positive. I want to focus on the campaign, but you know, you have to know in your heart, mayor, unless you have. A, a heart of, of steel and you have to know that this is wrong. What you did is wrong and the other council members have to know that this is wrong. You disenfranchised people, uh, someone who's in her thirties that was getting people fired up to join the Democratic Party. We have so many people that, 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 that switched from the Republican Party to the Democratic Party and you disenfranchised that. They're looking at it now and they're like, why am I a part of this party when you shut people down from running? Uh, it just, it's, it's beyond me. Anyway, I, I, I don't need any comments from you on this anymore. I just wanted to get that out. Uh, what I did want to say is something else. I, I wanted to say that, um, it was very disappointing. To see your reaction to a former councilman, to Councilman Megan. I did not know he was going to be on the phone call. Uh, just, I want to put that on the record. I haven't even spoken to Mr. Uh, uh, Megan since I started this campaign yet. Uh, and I also wanted to say that, um, you know. The way you spoke to the clerk to get her, to get the councilman off the phone, to me, was also disrespectful. And people can watch the video again and, and see for themselves. Uh, how, you know, uh, people are calling me unstable, but, you know, mayor, uh, from this phone call today, it's very eye-opening. Uh, you know, the way that you reacted to people when you're put on the spot is very, very worrisome and, and, and troubling. Uh, but anyway.
Oh, my God.
Is that, I don't. For having law degree, I know how, how, you know, how much hard work it takes to get something. I know lawyers, I, I know doctors and I know how time-consuming it is, so kudos to you. Uh, but I, I gotta say that, you know, I don't have a law degree and I know, uh, that landfills are bad. I think most of us, the landfills are bad. Um, and so when you tell us and when you use the excuse that, you know, um. When you use the excuse that, you know, we had to cap the landfill and to cap the landfill, we had to fill it more. To me, sounds, it, that just sounds terrible. How you can say, um, that to fix an issue, we have to add more to it. Uh, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. Um. It, you know, I don't think you should get kudos because you should, helped shut it down after everyone started complaining about it. Um, I don't think that you deserve kudos because we all know full well, uh, that you are the one who introduced the measure. And you are the one that got, you know, the, the council to vote on it to approve it. So I don't think, you know, now that you fixed the issue, you fixed something that you broke. And I don't think that you deserve credit for that. I think maybe it washes out, or, I mean, I still think it's worse that you opened up the landfill. Now that you close it, that's great, but you opened it in the first place. And that's something that people need to know, that you can't just erase that part of history. And say, at the time, it sounded like a good deal. To me, it would never sound like a good deal to reopen a landfill, a landfill that I know that has had troubles in the sixties and seventies. And we shut it down for a reason. And you decided you made, you brought up the motion, you yourself brought up the motion to reopen it. So, you know. I, 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 I don't, I don't think, you know, you wanting to take credit for it and putting it all over the observer and making it sound like you're the hero. You know, having a blowhorn in your hand and, and blaming everyone else, like the governor and everyone else. For not shutting it down when you're the one who opened it up in the first place. So that, I'd like to put that on the record, um, as well. And then I also like to say that, going back to this idea that you are an attorney. You know, we paid law firms to make up, to draw up contracts to open up the landfill. And then we paid the same law firm, I, I believe it was different people, maybe it was the, the father at the time, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, because I haven't delved that far into it. But I believe it was the father at the time and the son, the son owns the law firm and so you paid this same law firm. To open up the landfill and then you paid them to close the landfill. So what I'm saying is going back to this idea that it was your idea and your, it was basically your fault why it was opened in the first place. You being an attorney, why couldn't you do this work pro bono? Why couldn't you, um, offer your services to the town, being that you made the mistake in the first place and now you're fixing your mistake? Why couldn't you be, why couldn't you draw up these contracts and you close this down instead of having to pay people again to do it? Uh, that's, you know, a rhetorical, you don't have to answer, that's a rhetorical question, but, um. Uh, you know, if you'd like to answer that now, uh, go ahead.
Waiting for you to finish. I don't want to interrupt you, Mr. Ferrer. I'm waiting for you to finish your comments.
That's ten minutes, mayor.
Okay, so he's finished?
I believe so.
Don't get interrupted. Can he be muted, please? He muted. Thank you. Uh, so let me start with the, the landfill first. It began operation as a landfill nineteen fifty. Um, it stopped in the seventies when environmental law changed and you just couldn't dump ground, uh, oil and chemicals into the ground. Uh, and the operator of the landfill could not operate it, uh, in accordance with the new environmental laws that started taking effect in the nineteen seventies. He actually objected to it because he wanted to keep doing what he was doing. Uh. So it, it was inactive in terms of the new materials, but there's still illegal dumping that was going on. Uh, all sorts of, of new materials were found since, uh, the Keegan operators stopped, uh, uh, operations. Fires erupted, uh, all through the nineties, days on end, burning hazardous chemicals. Uh, and it was leaching, leaching, the chemicals, because it's right next to Frank's Creek and the marsh. Chemicals were leaching into the freshwater marsh. Uh, and the property, even though it was, even though, uh. You know, the landfill was MSLA operated by John Keegan. Uh, property, underlying property was owned by the town of Carney. So, uh, liability exposure, uh, was there. Uh, so the construction of a slurry wall around a hundred acres, a hundred acres of landfill. That were deposited into, uh, wetlands over the years, starting in the fifties. Uh, building of a slurry wall and capping it. Because, uh, the materials there couldn't not be safely removed. Uh, was the only way to properly close this landfill. So the liability on a cap. Slurry wall, leachate collection system, uh, that's thirty million dollars plus. Uh, in the mid-two thousands. We had public hearings. I don't recall any member of the public. I know you were here, Mr. Ferrer. I don't recall any of the member of the public coming forward. Uh, and objecting to the proposal that was negotiated, uh, with Greg Castano Senior. Uh, and, uh, the predecessor to the Sports Authority, the New Jersey Meadowlands Commission. And the agreement was that the Meadowlands would, uh, build the slurry wall, a hundred acres around the landfill. Build the leachate collection system pump station, which they did. Uh, and then cap it, cap it with, uh, uh, demolition debris. None of it was to be sheetrock. Uh, that was not a permitted material. Uh, asbestos was not permitted. There was a whole list of items that were not permitted. Uh, and once the cap would reach the, uh. The level to safely entomb what was there. They would stop. It would be a flat plateau. And we would build fields on top of it. There were presentations here from the state agency as to what those fields would be. Uh, and there would be revenue provided to the town to build those fields. Um, the landfill then became a source of income for the Meadowlands Commission. And the successor agency, um, for their operations. Uh, so they didn't want to stop. Uh, we had a, what we thought was a, a solid lease agreement that would allow us to, uh, exit. Um, and after the, uh, lease term expired and, uh, which we did. And we sought enforcement of the lease. Uh, and then them as the state of New Jersey, a state agency, they used eminent domain. They condemned the property from us. Uh, with, for the purpose of continuing landfill operations. Uh, that, uh, was when it turned into a community protest. Uh, in which the community successfully. Closed, uh, got the Sports Authority to, uh, reverse themselves. And accept, uh, the closure of the landfill, secession of activities. So no more solid waste coming in. Um, the one upside from the condemnation, notwithstanding all the. Protests and community opposition, um, and the hundreds of people who showed up. Not including Mr. Ferrer. Uh, was that the liability now lies squarely, we think, with the state of New Jersey. Uh, so while we were the underlying landowner before. They got what they wanted in terms of title, they're the owner. So now, uh, with the DEP, they're completing the proper closure of it, which includes an impermeable line. So when we started it in two thousand and five, when we first took up the agreement with the Meadowlands Commission, which you're disputing. Uh, we had a hundred acres of, uh, uh, serious chemical waste. Underground, leaching into marshland, uh, leaching into the freshwater, uh, Carney freshwater marsh, leaching into Frank's Creek. And that was periodically ignited. And when it ignites, it would release, uh, hazardous chemicals into the air. Uh, so we agreed and we took what we thought was a fair deal. Uh, if the Sports Authority had lived up to it, not taking the drywall and agreed to end it at, at the five-year period. Um, we wouldn't have to have done what we did afterwards. So, I mean, that's the history of the landfill. Uh, and we had able, very, more than able, we had exceptional representation from Castano Cleveland. Uh, including, uh, uh. Through the condemnation proceedings, even though we were unsuccessful, we went to the New Jersey Supreme Court to try to reverse the condemnation. As to Ms. Campos, I encourage Ms. Campos to be involved in politics, uh, in local politics, uh, in the Democratic Party. Um, uh, there, there are requirements to be a candidate. I don't, that all, that everyone has to live with. It's not whether or not someone points them out or not, although that's the process that's set up procedurally. But it applies regardless of whether someone points it out. Um, you shouldn't break the law. And the law requires one-year residency. By her own admission, uh, Ms. Campos did not register in the second ward until March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. About six weeks ago. That's not close to one year. Nowhere near close to one year. And she actually voted in a different ward. In November twenty twenty, where the ballot was different than the second one. It was not the same ballot. Uh, having said that, Ms. Ms. Campos could run for other offices other than the second ward that are open this year, whether it's. Uh, mayor or, um, I believe the county registers off, offices open, there, there are other off, or she could run. After she's completed her one year, if, uh, she could run for the next second ward council election. So she's not disenfranchised any more than any other person who moves into a ward. Um, you know, a couple of weeks, uh, registers to vote in a ward a couple of weeks before the filing deadline. So, uh, that's, so, uh, having said that, the arguments you made on this. Meeting call, I read, I was, I did not attend the hearing, but I did read through the transcript. You made all the arguments that you just made before court of law. That Ms. Campos couldn't run for council. Well, that's correct. This means she can't run ever. She could run next year or she could run for other offices. She could run for mayor. Uh. You did not deny, nor did Ms. Campos. Um, and you were a part of that lawsuit you filed as a plaintiff, even though you're not a party with standing, because it's not, it's the second ward office. You're quick to point out that the councilman in the second ward didn't appear, but not sure. Uh, and you didn't have standing, but we didn't object to that and, and the court allowed you to make your argument. Uh, so the disenfranchising argument was not accepted. Um, and there was, uh, an acknowledgement, there's no dispute that the March ninth, twenty twenty-one registration. And there's, and the law, you know, the laws, law of the state of New Jersey, it applies to all candidates. Applies to everyone who's running, um, for local office. Um, I made an objection as a citizen and as the leader of a local political party. As state law enables any citizen to do. The objection goes to the municipal clerk. Municipal clerk then applies state law and makes a determination. It's that determination that Ms. Campos had standing to appeal in court, which she did. And she made the same arguments you made, that was heard by the court. It's not, uh, my decision. It's the clerk's decision and that's what you appeal. You still sued me and you sued me in my capacity as mayor and that I had somehow intervened in the process. The only thing I did in the process was to file the objection with the clerk's office as a citizen. After that, I, as you pointed out, I didn't even attend the hearing. Um, because I wanted the process to play out through the municipal clerk, clerk and through the court system. Uh, if you get successful in the court, then, um, then I would have respected that decision. I would not have questioned the court as you just did. Uh, nor would I have questioned the law and tried to dispute that the law doesn't apply. Um, so it is, um, I think it's, um, somewhat of a distraction, this issue. Um, and I think that, um, if, uh. You know, uh, if I hadn't been sued as, as mayor, there weren't. It would have been an issue. I mean, Ms. Ferrer, uh, Ms. Campos could have gone directly on her own to the court and, and be heard. So you've had a day in court, you made your arguments, uh, both here, uh, and in court. And ultimately, the final say is the court clerk is the initial saying. uh, and in court, and ultimately the final say is the court, clerk is the initial say, then, then, then the court. Um, and it's not the county, I've also heard often the county says this was okay, the county has not said, the county takes no position on local candidacies for partisan office, that's the function of the municipal clerk. The county takes the determination of the municipal clerk. There is a period by which a challenge to the municipal clerk can be filed in court, which you did. And the county clerk who draws up the ballot will wait until those challenges are determined by the court. But they have no role, they make no decision on local candidacies for partisan office in a June primary. That's the function of the municipal clerk. To say anything else about them is to impute something onto them that's not accurate. Um, and if you want to attribute any statement to someone uh, in the county clerk's office, then you probably should do that on the record, you probably did everything else on the record. But what I've just stated to you is what the law provides in the state of New Jersey for local candidacies in a primary election. So, so that's the response to the points of that, or the arguments that Mr. Ferrer made. Are there any additional speakers, not of court, they have not spoken?
That have not spoken, uh, no.
Okay, so now we'll proceed for ordinances for introduction, councilwoman.
Mayor, I do have, I do have an email, though, uh, someone submitted Marcus Lee, he's a resident at five eleven Carney Avenue. He submitted, uh, an email today to the town clerk.
I think that has to be read into the record?
Sure. Hi, Mayor and Council, Carney Fire Department should merge with Harrison and East Newark Fire Department to form West Hudson Fire Department, similar to North Hudson Regional Fire and Rescue. This would benefit the taxpayers. Recycling of cardboard and commingled should be weekly and not bi-weekly. Most residents would appreciate weekly recycling of commingled cardboard. If you say costs taxes would raise, please provide a dollar amount to the public. What is being done with the Walmart crime issue? I haven't heard of any action this administration took to tackle this ongoing issue. Hickory Park, can we have officers stop by the basketball court around four, five, six PM? Maybe you can enforce a quality of life issue to the crowd, littering, loud music, small liquor bottles. Thank you, Marcus Lee.
Uh, the, I'll take him in reverse order on Hickory Park, I think Recreation, the Police Department um, have, uh, their recreation to their guards and Police Department as well to, to increase patrol of the area uh, to ensure that uh, these, uh, you know, quality of life issues can be ameliorated or addressed, rather. Um, on the Walmart crime issue, while Walmart is primarily responsible for safety at their facility, not the Carney Police. We respond to calls at Walmart. Uh, I don't know if there's been an increase in recent months in the number of calls, there was a period of time that there was, and then there was improvement, and I don't know, I have certainly not gotten any recent reports that it is a concern again, but I will check to see if the call volume has increased. Um, but the security is, that's private property, so, uh, initially, um, the, the premises should be kept secure by the tenants or the property owners, and if there is a crime, um, then the Police Department is called. If the volume increases, so it's diverting Police Department resources from other uh, calls or assignments, then it becomes a significant issue, that has occurred in the past, and we will check to see if it's occurring again. Um, as to recycling of cardboard and commingled, uh, Jim, are we about to go out to bid on the hall contract?
I don't believe that's up for bid this year, uh, I don't recall.
Option on the, on the final year.
And I don't recall, I thought we had sent it for five years, but.
And it's one of the, one of the items on CFO's appropriation sheet from earlier in the meeting, uh, which shows, uh, the increases for the coming year, and it is one of the increases uh, that we have. Solid waste hauling contractors, the cost of labor has gone up significantly uh, in the past, uh, especially with labor shortages, uh, due to the pandemic. Uh, and even now, as we're coming out of the pandemic, uh, so labor costs have gone up. And, uh, in addition, uh, this is more of the past year, fuel costs have started to go up significantly as well. Uh, so there is an increase already built in, uh, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more for the haul and contract. Um, I think for most, you know, I'm accustomed to one week bottles of glass and plastics and one week cardboard and newspaper. Um, and I think, uh, most, um, you know, I'm, you know, I haven't felt in terms of storage of paper that it's become overflowing, if anything, as we shift more to online resources and less print resources as we get our newspapers online. I think that my quantity of my paper has gone down. Um, uh, I do know that for businesses, we are doing daily pickup on Carney Avenue, I know the resident, I know the resident lives on Carney Avenue, but I think it's a multifamily, not a, not a ground-level business, uh, facility uh, or building in which he lives. Uh, and then the first one is that we have looked at it in the past, and, uh, we didn't find that it was cost-effective for a regional fire department uh, for the town of Carney, the numbers didn't add up. So to create a mega department where the numbers don't add up, it, it, we didn't do it. And we actually looked at it, Councilwoman McCall, participated former chief Dill, we looked at it uh, because the state of New Jersey asked us to look at it, uh, this is under Governor Christie. So, uh, we did run the numbers and we went backwards and forwards. We couldn't make those numbers work. So sometimes, uh, you know, larger departments, bigger doesn't always mean more cost-effective. And now we'll proceed with ordinances for introduction, Councilwoman McCurry.
Mayor, for introduction, I move, um, oh seventeen.
Second.
Seconded by Cardozo, all in favor, say aye.
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 Ordinance is introduced.
And on second reading, I move, we open the public hearing on oh twelve, that's the bond ordinance.
Second.
Seconded by Knopka, all in favor, say aye.
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 This is the time for, uh, fix for public hearing on this ordinance, uh, which is advertised for this time, it's entitled Bond Ordinance Providing a Supplemental Appropriation of Four Million Three Hundred Thousand Dollars for Duke Street, Devon Terrace, Tappan Street and Hoyt Street Pumping Station in and by the town of Carney County, Hudson, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of four million three hundred thousand dollars bonds or notes to the town to finance the cost thereof. Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Echo, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone?
And I move, we adopt oh twelve.
Second.
Seconded by Knopka, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are not voting, ordinance is adopted.
And, uh, I move, we open the public hearing on oh thirteen.
Second.
Seconded by Facito, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is the time fix for public hearing on this ordinance, which is advertised for this time, it's entitled Ordinance Establishing Handicap Parking Space at Fifty Seven Forest Street. Are there any speakers on this ordinance?
Um, John Pinto has his hand raised, but I'm not sure if it's for this or another ordinance.
Raise before, or did it just go up?
It was.
Before, Mayor.
Then it's not.
Oh.
Uh, when we concluded public speaking, all hands should be lowered, so we know when it's for the ordinance. Uh, so are there any speakers on oh thirteen? Uh, motion to close the hearing?
I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Facito, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Hearing is closed.
And I move, we adopt oh thirteen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Facito, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those are not voting, oh thirteen, adopted.
And I move, we open the public hearing on oh fifteen.
Second.
Seconded by.
Second by Knopka, yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is a time fix for public hearing on this ordinance, which is advertised for this time, it's entitled Order Demanding Section seven dash seventeen point one of the Town Code to exclude vehicles over designated gross weight on Sanford Avenue from Harrison Avenue North to its northerly dead end. Are there any speakers on this ordinance?
Melanie just raised her hand.
Ms. Ryan?
Hello. Okay, I have a question because I'm not sure if it was a mistake in the number that was used or we have an issue. The comment earlier was that it excluded any vehicle traffic over four tons. Um, how are we getting the garbage off of Sanford Avenue when an average packer weighs eleven thousand six hundred pounds, which is over five tons?
Um, there should be an exception for, uh, garbage hauling activities contracted by the town on any street with truck limitations because there's hauling on every street in town.
Okay, only because we only read it by title, I wasn't sure if there was an exception built in.
Yes, there's, there's exceptions for local deliveries and of course, emergency vehicles, I mean, and, you know, service vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Additional speakers? Motion to close the year.
I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Knopka, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
And I move, we adopt oh fifteen.
Second.
Seconded by Knopka, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are not voting, ordinance is adopted.
And I move, we open the public hearing on oh sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Did by Doyle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is the time for public hearing on this ordinance, now the ordinance establishing the full-time position of General Supervisor Garage Services. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? Please raise your hand.
No, no speakers.
Motion to close this.
I move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Ended by Doyle, all in favor?
Aye.
And I move, we adopt oh sixteen.
Second.
Seconded by Doyle, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those are not voting, ordinance is adopted. I'll review the resolutions that are currently not on the agenda unless there's a request for additional discussion.
Mayor, can I please have the bill list removed by the request of Councilwoman McCurry?
Two oh three, two oh four, two oh five, two oh six, two oh seven, two oh eight, two oh nine, two ten, two eleven. We'll take up two twelve before we go to close, two thirteen was acted upon already, two fourteen, two fifteen, two sixteen, two seventeen, and two eighteen, council.
Uh, Mayor, do I move the bill list first?
No, you.
That's on the consent.
No, 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 you have to make an amendment to the consent agenda to add the additional items and to remove the items.
Okay, I'll do that then. Okay, I'd like to amend the Consent Agenda Resolution two oh two to include all of the items with the exception of two thirteen, which we took action on. One ninety-four, which is the bill list, and two twelve.
Be removed from the consent.
Is being removed from the consent agenda.
And two twelve will be taken on, we go to. I'll second. Consent agenda, on the amended consent agenda, roll call.
Councilmember Doyle?
Yes.
McCurry?
Yes.
Echo?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Knopka?
Yes.
Castro?
Yes.
Santana?
Yes.
Facito?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes. I'll make a motion to go to close session to.
We have to.
No, no, excuse me, can I?
Sorry, sorry. I jumped ahead, alright.
You jumped ahead, I know, I, you jumped ahead. I'd like to move Resolution one ninety-four, which is the bill list.
Second.
Seconded by Echo, roll call.
Councilmember Doyle?
Yes.
McCurry?
Not voting.
Echo?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Knopka?
Yes.
De Castro? Santana?
Yes.
Facito?
Yes.
Mayor Santos?
Yes. Now I'll make a motion on two twelve to go to close, view tax appeals with tax, is there a second?
Second.
By Cardozo, we do not expect formal business when we return to open, we will just adjourn when we return to open this year. Your second by Cardozo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please disconnect and reconnect on the closed session number.
Do I have a motion to go back into open?
Second.
Do I have a motion to?
Second.
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Motion, Carol.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, Carol?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I will make a motion to close the meeting.
I will second.
A second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.